Four, looks like fifty-four. And we are going to go to, I believe, financing, budget amendment number eight. Mr. Walker.
Yes, I'm here to approve budget amendment number eight for April 2014.
Were members, after you've had a chance to review it, if you'll entertain a motion and then if you want to have conversation?
Well, I would approve budget amendment number eight.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve budget amendment number eight, April 2000. No, that can't be right. Budget amendment number eight.
Okay.
Discussion.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
All right, so explain this to me. I see that there was some revenues or some appropriations that canceled each other out, but then we had the increased appropriations for the calculation for environmental science by us $127,000, but we only brought in $8,000. Is that right?
Eight thousand in revenue, then their expenses was adjusted back to their actuals. When we do the calculation at the beginning of the year, we do a revenue worksheet, much like we did, I showed y'all with CERME, and then now we've actually come back with the actuals and fully funded all the appropriations and the FEVP.
But what's that budget?
It does get budgeted at the beginning of the year, but we haven't made the adjustments until this period of time.
Do we have to do it once? Do we have to do it after the first calculation?
There are different calculations. We didn't do it after the third calculation, that's why we had to make the adjustment on the fourth calculation.
Why so much?
I believe because their student population has risen greater than what we had originally budgeted for. Because they're, I think they're about 110, and we typically budget from ninety, something like that.
Okay, so here's a bit of the dilemma, and this, you know, this is, I think this is also going to be an issue for us, maybe not so much with CERME because our base speed is not based on FTE. But what we have, we're funding students that were originally in our school system, and we staff the teachers and administrators based on the number of enrolled students. We collected the funds for them at the beginning of the year, and term two, they go to Environmental Science Academy, and they take their money with them, the teachers stay behind. So now, our costs haven't gone down because that's the people left, but our costs actually have gone up because we have to take their money and send it to their other school.
Yeah, in those particular cases, I mean, we would share the FTE. We would get the first half of the year under our calculation for our schools, and the other half would go out there. That's correct. I mean, we would share the FTE in that, much like any other schools. I mean, if we budgeted for a school at Ganto for X amount of kids, and during halfway a year they go to Citrus, they transfer, they would be essentially, have more teachers than the students were.
Well, I understand that.
Right, that would be the...
Online works the same way.
Yeah.
Do I?
Online works the same way.
Right, I understand that too. I think it's a little bit of a unique situation because it's our own charter school, and yet what it's doing is it's costing our mainstream schools additional funding because our own students go from that school to the charter school. So I guess my question is that when we budget at the beginning of the year, do we then also need to cap enrollment so that we don't have negative, we don't have negative revenue during the course of the year, unexpected increases in enrollment students, because we have budgeted for that?
Yeah, I don't know if their contract allows us to cap. The only cap I know is self-imposed based on the actual space in the facility. I don't know if that agreement has a cap on the front row or not.
Do you understand why I'm asking that?
Yeah, well, there is no cap.
There is no cap. I think it's basically on the facility, actually.
Capacity.
Capacity.
Facility for around twenty people.
One fifteen.
One fifteen. So...
Yeah, and actually, that increase from the subject, I think, was just upgraded.
So, I'm just looking at this problem while we're having a budget shortfall, that we are losing $100,000 in revenues because we're taking our kids from school legs, which means we're sending all the money, which is not, which is not moving, and the teachers and all the infrastructure that's in place for that student, still there, still paying for them, like when they get expelled, but against the case, we're still paying for them, their teachers, the teachers are growing, where...
It was much like, like Mr. Wilson said, with the blended learning, we had to enact the second semester, I mean, we had to pay the virtual school, the blended learning fee, and they actually run our classes.
Right.
I understand what you're saying, I mean, we face that dilemma with multiple facets coming toward us, through virtual, through the virtue of the charter school, you know, and kids just moving from school to school.
And I think, and I don't disagree with Ms. Deutschman's concern, but I think if they, let's say for some reason if we had a number of students went to a private school, we would still be in that same dilemma, because they would end up, we would still have hired them for the first quarter or something, and then if they decided they went to a private school, that same scenario, I think, would take place for us. We would have hired the teacher.
But we wouldn't have had to take the money and send it somewhere else instead?
No, you're right. We just wouldn't have gotten that.
Correct. You have to, you, you might as well be, but...
I understand your point, I mean, I think we do face that issue that was, the virtual is a big one right now. Dual enrollment is huge. We actually had to double our budget to dual enrollment based on all the kids taking advantage of that. Not a bad thing on their behalf, but I mean, we...
The money we have to send out.
Correct.
They were supposed to adjust that, they could anything in that which led to that.
I did not see anything that came through on that.
Like talk about...
Not for public schools.
Just a question, maybe if we look forward to our budget process, maybe think about, do we need to add some legal room in budgeting for AES so that we're not having to figure out our revenue before, is this coming out of our budget?
Right, well, it goes right to them, I mean, we just adjust their expenses and appropriations.
Any other discussion on budget amendment number eight?
Mr. Walker, if you could review the portion of the budget the state, the state, the state...
The state, the FEVP.
On page four, nineteen. The ones from the state.
We have, the FEVP is a state-funded budget number, and the workforce development comes from the state. I mean, we essentially, we get about $54 million in revenues from the state from various allocation. And the local is from, you know, the district school tax required, local effort, discretionary local effort, and then other ancillary things we have going on. Most of those are from WTI, the adult general ed, post-secondary ed, continuing workforce ed. Those are majority of things coming out of workforce development, next door at WTI. Those are the locals.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Walker. Okay, I have a motion.
I'll give you the second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second, and, yeah, Ms. Powers is the second. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Approve advertising for public hearing.
Yes, the other is to approve, to advertise for a public hearing at July, for the July 22nd, 2014 school board meeting at 5:30 PM to approve the tentative 2014-2015 budget.
I'm going to approve the 2014 public hearing on July 22nd, 2014 at 5:30 PM.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve to advertise for a public hearing at the July 22nd, 2014 school board meeting at 5:30 PM to approve the tentative 2014-2015 budget. Any conversation?
I'll just get done.
That'll be out to you, hopefully, the Thursday prior to that Tuesday meeting. That's just to, essentially, y'all proving us to put it in the newspaper on that Saturday before we...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Bishop.
Good evening here. I'd like to request, request approval of instructional support recommendations.
You can just give us a minute, and thank you, as always, for sending us a preview copy.
We've got a lot of babies on our way.
We need the FTE.
That's your plan?
And anytime someone would like to, motion?
I'm going to approve the instructional support recommendations.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the instructional support recommendations. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to, on the resignations, we had just approved the student health specialists, and I don't think anyone will apply to take their place.
What's she doing?
She has time.
No, that's going to be second down.
It's a resignation, she's second in line.
Ms. Powers, that position has been posted. Once it's posted, we'll begin the interview process.
And what, well, first I had, I know we've discussed this probably a year, maybe two years ago, about the title with specialist, health specialist, and at that time I brought up my concerns that perhaps that title, that position should be a higher position rather than student health specialist, it could be student health supervisor, and we've taken a little back, and, and again, I make the same suggestions. I think the duties of this person merit more than just the specialist, health specialist. I think it merits supervising, beneath them, they have the RNs, the LPNs, all of the, all of the people who are in health services, who are in the school system are beneath that, and it's a lot, a lot of work to do, and supervision.
I understand there's been some previous conversations a little year prior. If it is the will of the board, staff and I can look at that and bring a presentation to the board about the possibility of doing that, but I just need some direction from the board, that's what you're looking for, which is to do.
Ms. Powers, just for clarification, is this the, where the conversation, I think we've had, on having to do with all of the different ratings for the different positions, or I should say, that it comes up, and that it's not, that it's not just that particular position, but we have other positions that may fall into those same scenarios?
That must go along with the cost of...
I just wanted to make sure that I'm talking about the same thing.
That it could be costly, but this person, the duties that this person has increased incredibly since, you know, five years ago, six years ago, as we add more and more duties to be able to attend children who have special needs, as the people have to be looked after, tracked, the records have to be in order, it's much, much more involved than it used to be, and I think with the involvement should come some compensation to what the duties are, and not just say, well, they'll just work harder. So I'd like to at least look at it, and I know last time we looked at it, I brought some information to the other states, where the jobs are very similar, and I know that they were at the level of supervisor, they were not at the level of specialist. I'd like to just look into it again and see where we are, a year, maybe two years later, and to look at it again and see what direction, you know, if everyone says, well, I know where we are, and so it is where we are, but I'd like to see if we have more added, that perhaps there should be a change.
And Ms. Powers, I'm just, and I'd ask too, Mr. Bradshaw, would this require then, for us to do that, really, we're looking at a job description change?
Job description.
I'm sorry, I don't think the rest of...
Isn't it the job description?
Well, I think, I think we're going to cut Southern Penn to us from Mr. Disturri about moving of the...
Right, that's what it sounds like, it would involve that type of instrument of a job description change with the pay difference differential, and that would, I would think, go through Ms. Alagretta's department as supervisor or supervising administrator.
In conjunction with Ms. Alagretta and her department. We would have to put a hold on what we're doing. We can't, because that's not what's posted, that's not what we're getting ready to interview for.
And that would involve also looking at then your other positions that are currently working and how that works into those existing ones. My reflection, and Ms. Balfour, I apologize, because I do want you to, but just as a reflection of, I think, when we looked at it, Ms. Alagretta, you brought forward some information at that time, and it was to try and show where, as a district citrus was with regards to the other schools, but before you answer, I want to give it over to Ms. Balfour.
Well, my concern with this position, with the role exponentially growing because of cutbacks and people retiring and everybody doing more with less, that opens up conversation about other positions out there, secretaries, support staff, teachers, so if we do look at this role, we, it's incumbent upon us to look at all of these.
And Ms. Balfour, you're right, because that's really kind of where we were at the last time, is it, it wasn't like we could take one. I think Ms. Powers has a very valid, I do not want that to be topped over, I think that the concern is extremely valid, and I'm not saying we shouldn't have that conversation, Ms. Powers, but I just wanted to know, that, I think, is probably the concern, I think, that I still have too.
And it could go into other areas. This portion of the educational system, the medical portion of the education, is a lot different than what we're talking about, say, social studies, teaching social studies, or the skills that are needed, there are a lot of jobs that are assigned that would not be in the other area, so I think it's worthy of taking a look at. Now, I don't think that at this point, that when we're hiring, that we should stop what we're doing and change it. I think we should go ahead with what we're doing, but I would like to look at what this entails, because all of us know about educational, that what it entails today will be doubled to, it's going to be much more, and you're going to have to have people with even higher levels of skills, so I think we need to sort of take a look, be ahead of the game, take a look at what we are actually wanting to do, and we had some information from other states, you had some information that said, well, this is not going to stay the same, this is going to grow, and we need to look at growth.
Well, I agree with the movement here to be proactive and really look at what's happened, day-to-day activity on the job compared to what the job description looks like, and understanding that many people throughout our district, every day they're putting on more and more responsibilities, and, you know, some people are wearing two or three job description hats, so with this being the catalyst for opening up that dialogue and that research, maybe the board can agree to ask staff to do a little bit of background investigation to see where we really are, how many people have two or three different hats, and what can we do to be fair in compensation, so I appreciate the fact that she was able to focus in on one specific job that really needs that consideration, and that can move us forward for greater.
Ms. Alagretta.
Thanks.
Ms. Alagretta, I'm sorry, if you could just, oh, she, you were, I didn't know if you had anything to give us.
No, no, I'm just listening to you, and I, you know, I appreciate not just my department, but other departments as well, and I do appreciate the fact and the consideration that it is posted, and right now my focus is on getting a desk for that job so that we can be in place to meet all the needs, but I do appreciate you looking at not only this position, but other positions in the district to look at, see if things do need to be changed, and appreciate that.
And the money would come from where?
Exactly.
There are not always bad times, we need, we need to be ready.
Well, we just, we just outsourced one of our major programs for our school system because we didn't have enough money to make ends meet, and you're talking about giving somebody a raise?
Well, I think it's, I think it's not a necessary dialogue to go that direction, but I think we need to look at, what I have seen with staff is that you'll have staff members in any business, any business, across any country, you'll have staff members that are just willing to go beyond, and that they'll do that with a smile, and they'll be appreciative for the opportunity to serve, and they come in every day on time, and they work late, and I think those people have a tendency to get that extra load in their lap because they'll smile when that extra load comes their way, and I think it's just, from a board member's perspective, of interest to see how many are in that position. What are we looking at? Are we looking at five employees that are doing the job of 15, or is it, is it a wider issue? I'm not advocating anything except for a study to be done, to see how many people out there within our staff are wearing three or four different job descriptions every day, with the pressure and the expectations that come with that. That's all, from my perspective, that I'd like to see. We can't talk about raises or anything further until you have a definite picture of what you're dealing with. If we've got five staff members that are doing the job of 15, then maybe we can add their name and their title to the student health specialist position that we're doing deep research with. So, anyway, that's...
How would we determine that? How would we determine if the overall, if all the workers are underpaid? Everybody raise their hand?
Right.
A hundred percent of our staff will...
Our administrators have been placed in a position to have to make those tough decisions. Our administrators are tuned in to their staffing formulas, our administrators know when they've had an attendance secretary that's already had to take on that role as well as a data entry physician. Our administrators are aware of what they're dealing with, and, again, I'm just trying to, trying as a board member to have a deeper understanding, because we do have to deal with the budget in the bylaw.
Here's my caution on that one, though, it's like asking parents on a survey, are you happy with the buses? Do children like their lunch? The school doesn't really have any authority to change that. They can't change the bus route, they can't make the food better, so the questions that you should ask are only ones that you are then prepared to address, because if you don't, and you ask people their opinion about their responsibilities, and you don't do anything about it, they'll say, you didn't listen to me. Why didn't you listen to me? And then they get disgruntled. So you better be really careful when you ask those questions, you better already be prepared to respond and have money in your arsenal to fix whatever it is they say is not working for them as employees, otherwise, don't ask.
Well, we're looking at asking or being guided to ask with this one position, student health specialist. We're sitting here with open ears and an open heart, considering instructing staff to move forward with giving us as a board a deeper understanding of that role.
Well, we still have consensus on that right now.
Okay.
And that's being brought by the director of that department, and who is, who is the leader for that department. We, no, 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 I'm talking about the one that, no, 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 the, you're talking about the health one? I'm sorry, I thought, Ms. Balfour, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the food service one, and that's what I was thinking.
I'm going back to Mrs. Powers and Ms. Bryant.
Yeah.
And I definitely think that if one questions, one should at least have some directions and research on it, and you were saying that we don't have consensus, I would think that one would want the knowledge.
The, I think the only concern that we, and I, and I actually feel very similar to, similarly to Ms. Deutschman on this particular issue, that I, my concern is that this is two factors. One, when we do not have enough applicants for the position that are qualified or that are coming forward, I think that's an appropriate time to then address this, and that is usually something that comes forward from the HR department through then the supervisors, coordinators, directors from that department. We talked about that, and I believe it was about this very issue, that if we did not get enough qualified individuals, we would relook at that. I'm certainly open to that, because I believe that is a very real catalyst. If we find that we are not having, and this, I think, has been an ongoing thing, if Mr. Gettys, Dr. Gettys does not have enough qualified people within, the technology people that he needs, then he has to address whether he's going to bring a change forward that will require us or allow us to then look at that. I would agree that I think that while, I think that there, I would be very surprised if not 100% of our staff said they are doing more for less, and they are doing more for less.
Well, we're certainly not more.
We're certainly not more, that's for sure. That is the reality, but then when we start looking at this, and I can tell you, living with one of those teachers, the teachers will say, well, I hope that you're including us in that mix. I hope, then the custodians are going to say, you just added 5,000 square feet more that we're cleaning, I hope you're including us in that mix. I don't know where that ends. And so, my caution would also be for this board to remember that it is Pandora's box. We are in a position where we do not have the funds to do that, but I am certainly willing to reevaluate that if we do not get the right applicants that will come forward, and I think that's not just with this job, that's with any job. So that's, that's mine, and I do not want that to misinterpret Ms. Bryant, I mean, Ms. Powers, I do not disagree of what your, your feelings are on this, because having, again, family that's healthcare administrators, they are right along there with you, saying, really? This is what, you know, you're, and I don't disagree with that, I just am concerned of the big picture.
Well, and I understand that concern and what I would ask, so that we do have a clear guide when it comes to your department, when you have a job description and you're posting that job description, that job description needs to truly paint a picture of what day-to-day operations looks like as far as responsibility, and, and as we move forward, we need to do this investigation so that we truly are advertising these positions as they are in the real world within their, when you have someone that's taking on two or three different job descriptions as they're outlined now, we need to look at that, and that's what I'm asking. They're talking about raising salaries, I've not, I've not gone there, I'm looking at aligning job descriptions with day-to-day activities, so if someone's wearing three different job descriptions, then if that's what we're going to continue to have, because we've determined that this is, we're streamlining systems, and that we're able to be efficient, and that this is a burden that our staff can bear, then let's make that job description that is posted reflect what's happening on that job. So that's what, when I'm talking about researching, that's what I'm looking for, that's what I'm looking for.
Our job descriptions are not that specific where they exclude. I'll use an example, we haven't had a director of secondary ed for three years, we have, we have administrators that perform those duties, but nowhere, it's, it's not anywhere against their job description, but nowhere specifically is it in their job description. They're still doing things within their job description, they just have more things to do. And that's the same case with some of our support staff, whether they're secretaries, clerks, native clerks, you know, they're covering more than just one area, but they're still doing the things that are listed in their job description.
Like Lily Byrne Army, she's covering out for two people, each one a few persons. Like, what, does that mean that we should pay her twice as much money?
No, definitely.
You know, it's, if people are not supposed to cover their positions, they will leave, that's what...
Well, and that's, I guess that's why I keep, I keep looking at these changes, retirements, growing, and I understand until the well is dry, why worry about it, but I, back to the proactive stance on this, because people are leaving.
Yeah, but let's also be mindful that there's a natural rate of attrition also. We've discovered, no matter what the budget cycle is, we're going to hire somewhere between 75 and 100 teachers, or than that in terms of support staff, each and every year. Certainly, myself and my staff would be glad to carry out the will of the board. If you guys want us to do a, some sort of salary study or some sort of job description study, we'll do that, that is an enormous task. I do, I would caution you to be mindful of some of the discussion amongst yourselves there. If we go out and we solicit this information, if we're not prepared and we don't have the resources to resolve some issues that we're going to discover, then it does seem as if we're, those statements fall on deaf ears, and we've got to be mindful of that as we move forward.
Mr. Bishop, maybe you can give us an idea, because, and I think we all are concerned when it comes to education, where we are five years from now in particular with instructional teachers, it's a concern, a long-term concern that I continually talk about in the community, but I was kind of surprised recently of some, the number of applicants. So, at a typical school right now, if a teacher, if a teacher's position or instructional position's being offered, about how many applicants are we getting?
It wouldn't be uncommon, first, to get 35, 38 applicants for a single position. That wouldn't be uncommon.
That's a lot of applicants.
Yes, sir. What we've discovered is the market...
And I was actually very surprised by that. I would have thought five, 10, maybe.
The marketplace has become much more competitive for these positions, you know, we're oftentimes getting calls from people saying, hey, I want to try to get into such kind of schools, what are some things I need to do to be best prepared for interviews? I can just tell them to be familiarized with what Citrus County has to offer, be very familiar with the data of the school that you're applying for, and try to do your homework, so to speak, but it is very competitive. I can't recall a time when we had had more than a large amount of applicants for an instructional position.
Instruction's one thing, I know we're having a hard time getting custodians and substitutes, and I do want to commend you and your team for, speaking of attrition, I want to commend you and your team for how you handled the Renaissance placement. It was, it was a challenge, it was hard for me as a board member to watch how that It was, it was a challenge, it was hard for, for me as a board member to watch how that had unfolded. And I do appreciate the quick response and all the efforts made to try to place people where you're putting talents that match the job description. I do appreciate that. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Let me mention, I know that the part about salary is potentially a flex, but what I'm looking at is background of persons, the education of the person, the degrees of the person, that are very important to a position that is a position that is supervising other people. So I'm looking at the experience as primary enough. And since I know how very, very difficult these are, it's, it's, um, very, I guess unless you walk the walk, the talk, the talk, you don't see this much, but it's a very broad and a very deep type of position. And that concerns me anytime, anytime a person is at the top, like for instance, uh, Miss Timmel over there. She'd never step in the school and her lines are up. The only thing she can claim to fame is that she caught a big fish once and she was seven. I would be very worried if that were to be said with her. So you have to look at what a person can do, and this one in particular is always concerning because I know the children who have disabilities, the ones that have to have plans written for them, and you have to have a person who knows what they're doing, which are right of plan. So it's just a, a very, very concerning position to do. And I don't think it has to boil down to everything. We have like, we have attorney scales, we have attorney scales. If Wes had to go by first-year teacher, what's your word? As our attorney, you know, we have different scales.
He's been selected for first-year teacher.
It's not the same. No, you're not. So we do have different skills, everything is not the same. So I don't think when we look at one thing, that means we have to look at everyone.
So Ms. Powers, I appreciate the fact that you brought this up last year. We discussed it and we kind of put it to bed for seeing who applied. We got Ms. Hope, and now she's leaving, we don't know why. She resigned, okay. Was it for money?
I have not spoken correctly with her.
So I think mainly because you want to have it posted and because you need to move on with this position, that let's just see. And it's just like when Mr. Blocker applied for the job, well, he didn't, we were trying to recruit him as finance. And nobody applied, nobody applied, nobody applied. And then finally, when we raised the starting pay, is when we were able to attract him because of his expertise and his knowledge and his background. So I don't know, we want to presuppose that nobody qualified will apply for this job because of the level of pay until we get there. Because I don't think we're in a position right now where we have the luxury of adding to this somebody who makes it more attractive. I think we need to do that only as a result of not being able to find someone qualified at this point. I would say it would be something that would be like a last inch up on our card to find somebody because we just, we just don't have the resources right now.
Well, I, I want it to be clear, I want, I want to make sure everybody understands that I'm not advocating that we rush out and get ourselves in debt to try to make people happy with something that we don't have the power to do. I, I, I just am looking for a balance in day-to-day duties, because I know the good, that every company has those people that, "And can I give you this one?" Sure, no problem. I just want to make sure that we are having a balanced workload that matches the job description. So that's it. Now, if we don't have the resources to do that kind of research, looking at the can that can open up and backfire in our faces, I, I don't think there needs to be any kind of a misperception or promise out there of financial reward for this. It's just back to equitable, balanced, day-to-day operations workload. That's it.
Ms., Ms. Balfour.
We can go and approve this golden light, so you can get on with your day.
And, and Ms. Balfour, and we're, we're going to do that because we have a time certain, but I, I guess in order for me to help either feel like we have consensus or not consensus, I guess my question would be is if we were to review every job description in our, our book and bring it up to match each of the job duties of today.
The perceived.
The perceived duties. Having that information, both the board, the supervisor, the staff member, what does that change? How does, what does that, how does that become new? And how does that information aid us? Because it would be a great deal of effort. Um, it also, it is breathing. Many of our positions are, are moving. So we do that. So we have that, that information, and we have it in hand. And I would agree that it would probably be a tremendous amount of, of differences. What does, now what do we do with it? We have that information, now what do we do with it?
I think what I'm saying, one of the things I was looking at on this, and really, really, what's the concept that gave me my mind is back to this is what the person does, this is the job description.
You, Ms. Powers, the microphone.
I'm sorry. But I, I would take that, what she does, what needs to be done, then I would look at a person, maybe at the school side, who could share some of that. So I didn't see it as an increase in money so much, I know if you change that into it, but I saw it as a sharing more responsibilities. Uh, and I think that's what you look at. So you all are seeing it as a, as a tumultuous, that you're almost, you know, like a tsunami. I see it as a, an accurate description, and I see it as a sharing of responsibilities for a job that is a very difficult job, if done properly, it's a very difficult job. So we're looking at it in two different ways. And I, my question is, I would just like to take and look at the job and see what should be there and what shouldn't be there, and if there's sharing and if there is increase. But here, today, I wouldn't do anything, I would just add this, but I would put in the future. Because I absolutely, I know that it's going to increase in terms of responsibility.
And, but Ms., Ms. Powers, you're asking for the one job description to be looked at. I think Ms. Balfour is asking it all, to form a committee and have all of them looked at. At least that's what I heard.
Well, and looking at just opening up one job description to analysis and consideration. I think that that, that does open us up for staff to be, that would be disentend.
We're going to have to pause then for a moment and open up our 5:30 public hearing. So I'm recessing the, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm recessing our regular board meeting and opening up our public hearing at 5:30 to approve the revisions to the 2014-2015 Code of Student Conduct to strike and remove Section 5 High School Attendance Requirements for Course Credit. Ms. Alagretta.
You said it perfectly, Mr. Kennedy, that is for today. This would be the, the final approval from the board. The copy that you have in front of you is, as they say, camera ready to go. The consideration we're asking you to look at today is on page eight, where it was decided to take out that section about attendance appeals at the high school level. Roman numeral five, then will become the present roman numeral six. And every roman numeral will be picked up in that section.
It wasn't the appeals, it was failure due to excessive absence.
Right.
So that, the appeals process was part of that whole thing, but that title was failure due to excessive-
Excessive absence, yes, all under that, correct.
And what I'm going to do is, if I can, ask for if there is anyone here to speak on behalf of the revisions to the 2014-2015 Code of Student Conduct to strike and remove Section 5 High School Attendance Requirements for Course Credit. Asking for a second time, is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Third and final time. Ms. Alagretta, you may close to on this.
Thank you. Well, that we approve, what's the wording of that?
The revision?
The revision to 2014-2015 Code of Student Conduct to strike and remove Section 5 High School Attendance Requirements for Course Credit.
I have a mo-, I'm sorry.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutchman, a second, and only probably because it's closer, by Ms. Powers, to approve the revisions to the 2015 Code of Student Conduct to strike and remove Section 5 High School Attendance Requirements for Course Credit. Any more discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Yea. Yea, yes. No.
It passes 4-1 with Ms. Balfour descending. And I'm going to go ahead and reconvene Mr. Bishop. And I'm sorry, no, I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:35 and open up the regular board meeting. Mr. Bishop. And I think where we're at is, really at this point, we need to have consensus. Um, first, Ms. Powers, you're asking for then just the one to be looked at, or are you looking at, at, you also saying all of them?
No, I was looking at all.
Just to the one?
Just the one.
And I'm just going to say for, so that we, that, I, I greatly respect you, and I'm, but I'm just going to say that it's not something I'm, I'm concerned about doing myself at this time.
So it's drawing consensus.
Yeah, just trying to draw consensus on this first is, first, this is on the one, and I'll come back to yours, Ms. Balfour. Um, Ms. Deutchman, do you have anything?
No, I think we've already done that, made clear, post this position, we don't want to drag our feet and be, we find that we don't have sufficient application. It would, it would then prompt us then to ask for that to be worked out before us.
I agree.
Ms. Bryant, well then, so we have a consensus of, a majority consensus of, of not moving forward with the one. Now I'm going to ask if we have any consensus on opening up and looking at all of them and doing that. Ms. Deutchman? On, even on support, focusing on support.
You know, we have, we have a Director of Personnel, we have supervisors, we have administrators whose job that is is to monitor their employees, their workload, their responsibilities, and bring to us if they have concerns, and I think this falls into the category of someone micro-managing, trying to tell everybody what job they need to do. We look more at the administrative level, qualification, but we lead those hiring decisions and admin management decisions, those everyday operational decisions to our staff, and that's where I think that should stay. And they need to come to us just like they're coming to us, they have three proposals changing when they see that there's inequity.
Well, I, I agree with the boundary between board duties and day-to-day operations with staff. Understanding though that we as a board are responsible for the, um, job descriptions themselves, recognizing that we're also responsible for approving your staffing plans and helping guide the development of those staffing plans. With that consideration also with the budget constraints that we've had to deal with and recognizing that we've had to make some tough decisions, specifically noting Renaissance most recently, I think it's incumbent upon us to do a study to recognize the impact of our decisions. What's happening in the real world with day-to-day operations and how do they relate to those job descriptions with our support staff specifically. At this point, I definitely understand the wave of, of feelings here with the board. I, I'm not going to belabor the issue, I just feel very strongly about, I, I don't want to call it an investigation, but a study. A study to see where we are with the burdens in day-to-day operations within the job description compared to what's really going on. So with that said, I understand we do have a time limit of discussion, and I'm ready to move on.
And I, and I would still ask, because I haven't voiced mine yet, and Ms. Bryant hasn't either, if we were to have all that information, what would we do with it? How would it, how would it guide us and change us?
Back to what I mentioned earlier, as far as, again, drafting job descriptions that truly reflect the burdens of day-to-day operations, that would be my priority.
But I'm saying, once we did that.
That would be my priority and my goal.
And once we did that, what would change? But from that work, because I would hope we would only do something that would then have some reasonably positive outcome.
You could make the assumption that job descriptions are not accurate. What, what's your basis for that?
Well, and that's why I think a study would be inappropriate.
Why do we have to have a study when we have something that's never come before us as an issue, ever?
I, okay. I understand the direction.
About job descriptions, and we've asked the job descriptions to be rewritten because we felt they didn't apply. We were asked to vote on something and we felt it didn't apply to the votes, so it's come up several times.
Well, and this is a prime example of how it's coming up again with Mrs. Powers', um, example here. I mean, this, this is the example of today that opens up the conversation and dialogue that's gotten us to this point.
And I don't think the job description does not reflect what we're asking the person in student services to do. The question that I think Ms. Powers has asked us is the level of responsibility, where that position falls, whether it should be a support staff, professional technical, or administrative. But the duties are clear, and when it comes to job descriptions, neither union would, would allow us to get away with having people do things that are not in their job description. So that's not a rampant problem.
And during my tenure as HR Director, one of those cases did come, come up. It was brought to my attention, and it was a Renaissance aide, they were all being mandated to ride, ride the school bus. So we brought before the board a recommendation to amend the job description to accurately reflect the responsibility of them having to ride the school bus, because other regular teacher aides, non-ESE aides, they don't have that requirement. But by virtue of their day-to-day responsibilities, we felt it was necessary to rank before the board that amendment to their job description. So when those issues are brought to our attention, we definitely look at them, at the board, before the board. But once again, I just want to make sure I have a very clear-
Let me, because I, I don't think Ms. Bryant has shared.
No, we have a four, but we have a four to say.
Which tie?
Today. That's all I've got to say.
So I'm going to take that as, as that you're okay.
I'm fine.
Okay. And I'm going to say that, that I believe-
I'm sixty-seven.
And I, again, I'm not sure what we, we would do differently than how we've been doing them. I think that the staff has regularly, HR has regularly brought us job description changes, particularly when they involved increases in pay, which validated that we needed to address those. We can continue to do that. I appreciate you doing that. Um, I appreciate the managers, our directors, our coordinators who continue to monitor that and, and see that. But I can tell you, and I think of, of TRC in particular, that I think of just about, there isn't probably one person in that one division. And this is an example of, I think, every one of our, our departments that are not having to double up, do more, um, take on more responsibilities. And I think that, that we, we know this, we know that. So, and I, I know in a lot of our job descriptions, it does do one of those and, um, as needed by-
Does the sign?
Yes. So that does that. So with that, I'm, I'm, I'm good as well. So Ms., Ms. Deutchman, actually, it's yours, so you can, I'm sorry.
I called a question, do you want to vote on the call for the question?
Absolutely. No, you go right ahead. We have a question called. Um, is there any objection then to us moving forward? Uh, I have a motion by, um, this, I'm sorry, I've got here. I, I have a motion by Ginger Bryant, a second by Sandy Balfour to approve instructional and support recommendations. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Well, I still have to.
The next item I have on the agenda is to request the approval of the appointment of administrative personnel for the 2014-15 school year.
I'll vote approval of administrative personnel for the 2014-15 school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutchman, a second by Ms. Powers to approve the appointments of administrative personnel for the 2014-2015 school year. Any discussion?
The Marine Corps Station.
Right, oh, that's where I sat on here.
They got a paperwork, and they actually came and signed it.
Yeah. So here's where I'll make the opposite argument. The Director of Secondary Ed, we haven't had one in a couple of years. And, and, and here's the deal. High school graduation has become the most difficult thing that we are facing in the educational world. And we don't have a Director of Secondary Ed to help us in coming up with a better ideology, what do we need to do, how can we help our kids graduate, how can we make sure they take the classes that they're supposed to? How do we keep up with the credits? How do we keep up with the mandates? How do we keep up with the technology needs? You know, we're just talking a little bit, we're talking to Mr. Slimer about the ninety days and their dedicated seventeen days, and we have, like, more than half the kids, or seniors, that haven't taken the online virtual course. How are they even going to get into the computer labs and do that? We have some real issues that we need to take control of. And Mr. Clutter, you talk about wearing, he's wearing pre-hats right now. Um, so I think as far as the needs of our district, I think that's very, very high need that we, that we build that position. district, I think that's very, very high need, that we build that position. I mean, I don't see how we don't, and be responsible for what it is that we're trying to achieve with our students, which is they will not graduate, a hundred percent graduation, I'll go back to that, how do we do that?
Ms. Deutschman, I know too, and just, because you've been here...
That wasn't yours.
I didn't say that. But I remember there being a lot more people over on that side of the thing, and I can think of at least, I think there's three on our list that are vacant, as a, but there's two in that department that between, and six, or three when you include, that Mr. Walker has not hired a finance person, he's been taking on that role, Mr. Mullen and Mr. Clotter have taken on those other roles in that division, and again, we talked about Ms. Vergarami, everyone has taken on a tremendous amount, and I would agree, secondary and having a child that is in, having now two children that are in secondary, and when I see our secondary, it is concerning that, and I want you to know that when we say that, or when I say that, I cannot get over how well our district does over and over and over, but we have triage to try and do this, and your team, Ms. Himmel, has done an admirable job with that.
Are you saying we can move from four to one?
Well, and if you remember, and I'm sure Mr. Simon will say this before it's over, look at the free and reduced lunch differences of those that beat us out, they're in the twenty and thirty percent of their free and reduced lunch, we're at sixty-five percent free and reduced lunch, so I'm sorry, Ms. Himmel.
Waggles.
We're certainly, I think, you know, at least I know this board members, anytime you want to bring that position up, I'm going to be here. Any more discussion on the approval of appointments of administrative personnel for the 2014-2015 school year? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, five zero.
And congratulations to all the people that are new on the list.
Is that, by the way, is that Mr. Olson that we just opposed?
Amy Crowe.
Amy Crowe, Ms. Crowe's in the audience. I do want to just say something that some of you may or may not know about Mr. Olson. Mr. Olson started going to the Marine Science Station as a student in fourth grade, so to have a student that became then a graduate, a teacher, and now a leader at the Marine Science Station is something that I think we should be very proud of.
And he's Carl Hanson's stepson.
He is Carl Hanson's stepson, or Mr. Hanson would correct and say, they're just all my kids.
And his wife is a teacher, and who's his stepson?
His sister, and his other sister's one at Crystal River High. And his mom was, wasn't his mom?
Yeah.
I don't think anybody has anything of the Nelson family and the Olson family, maybe.
But I heard when they called me, they told me, they said, I'm so excited, because he's so...
I was excited, and you know why.
Are you related to them too?
No, I taught him.
Oh, that's it, yeah.
With everybody, he was doing it every school.
Okay, we need to move on to support personnel for 2014-2015.
Actually, I believe we should go to number three, request approval of the appointment of instructional personnel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did too, thank you, Mr....
Sorry?
No, we didn't, we just did administrators.
I move to approve the appointment of instructional personnel for 2014-15.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the appointment of instructional personnel for 2014-2015. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Now we can go on to support.
I'd like to request approval of the appointment of support personnel for 2014-15.
I move to approve the appointment of support personnel for 2014-15.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the appointment of support personnel for the 2014-2015 school year. Any more conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
I'd also like to request the approval of instructional personnel for summer school for 2014-15.
I make a move to approve the support personnel for summer school for 2014-15.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the instruction personnel for the summer school for 2014-2015. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries five zero.
I'd like to request the approval of support personnel for summer school for 2014-15.
I move to approve support personnel for summer school for 2014-15.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve support personnel for summer school for 2014-2015. Any conversation?
Why so many in this? What's happening that requires so many?
Most often it would be transportation, bus drivers.
Oh, okay.
Does ESE sound to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
For the next agenda item, I want to turn it over to Ms. Wayne to come up and ask approval of the staff employment.
Oh, that was slick.
And if it's okay with the board, after Ms. Wayne's done, we'd like to be asked to give the opportunity to bring Mr. Bastoni up to discuss the agenda, I don't think he has as well.
Good evening, I'm here to request the approval for the staffing plans, and I'll share with you the differences, we changed the guidance counselor to certified school counselor, and we took Renaissance off of the staffing plan, so you will only have five, and the other change that we made is on the CREST staffing plan, last year, you'll know, we moved to, they were sharing with Renaissance, the psychologist and the certified school counselor, now CREST will have a full-time certified school counselor and school psychologist again, and that transition, it was just the Renaissance employees that moved over to those positions, so if there's any questions.
Question on the elementary, but they don't have a guided secretary there, what's the reasoning behind that?
They have the bookkeeper, data, guidance secretary, they have those positions and they can use them however they wish, whether they like to use the, like a bookkeeper and a data secretary, like at our small schools, or if they would like a bookkeeper guidance, a lot of those secretarial positions have actually been combined, where they're doing all different duties depending on which school they're at.
And are they trained, like, as a guided secretary, they're all the specific, you have to have knowledge?
They do receive training, and they also have backups now to receive that training as well.
So we kind of had a discussion, and then nothing ever came of it, but there was, I had some questions about why PE, art, music on the elementary side, are the ratio as a teacher per number of instructional units instead of teacher per number of students?
That is correct.
The question was why?
I, that has been the way we have had it, we have not changed that, we can certainly look and change that if we need to look at the number of students at the school. Pretty much it goes in, it goes together with the number of students and the number of teachers, I mean, pretty much the ratio is pretty equal, but we can look at that if you'd like us to.
Not necessarily, we have some, we have some schools that have some self-contained classrooms, they have a higher, you know, student teacher ratio, we, you know, I don't know that that necessarily, if you equate it to students, it would make a difference, but when we look at our smaller schools in particular, there's great inequity in the number of administrators per student and administrators to instructional units, and we haven't done anything to, we haven't done anything to address that, we've talked about it a number of times as far as looking at that, when we looked at the budget of each individual school, it was apparent that there was some very large discrepancies, and when we're talking about budget cuts and having to cut programs, and we don't address our staffing plan, I think we really missed an opportunity to be more efficient, especially at those, if we want to keep our small schools, we need to run them with the same type of staffing that's at the larger schools, and that means either administrators per student or administrators per instructional unit, not a total enrollment four fifty and below, because when our school has three hundred, it's a big difference between a school that has eleven hundred and there's only one extra administrator. So the ratio of students to the administrator or instructional staff to the administrator is huge.
And I think one of the thoughts on that, on the staffing plan, we have is that, if you look at our staffing plan numbers, and this is probably something we need to go back and work on, you see we've got four hundred and fifty students, or less than four hundred and fifty students, and maybe we need to work on the staffing plan for three hundred students, because we've got two schools, our two schools.
I mean, if you look at this, there's an assistant principal for one to three hundred students and one to eight hundred and fifty students, how is that not totally equitable? How is that, how are we asking, talk about wearing, the number of hats?
Definitely, thanks for bringing that up.
That's by a factor of two and a half, the responsibility of students and staff, so, you know, that's been a concern for a number of years, we haven't addressed it, we've addressed it in a smaller way by cutting the curriculum and the ESE specialist, now we're actually at CREST, that we had become more efficient because we lost the Renaissance, we went from half to full time, so now we just increased our cost of creps because we had two people half-time that didn't have any place to go.
Well, in a smaller school, too, we reduced the number of TOSSAs and ESE specialists, our assistant principals were picking up those responsibilities, as at the larger schools, those TOSSAs and ESE specialists, I understand what you're saying, that that was kind of the way we looked at it, because the principal principals out of those schools were meetings, at least we've got an administrator at the school that also covers curriculum, sometimes guidance area, and ESE work.
And I do appreciate what we've done as far as being proactive, and I'm not going to mention what school, but, and this, this person did not know that I was able to see the action taking place, but I saw an administrator that routinely picks up the ball and was wiping down counters, emptying trash cans, putting things away that had been left out, and I watched, I just watched, I watched. This person had gloves on, and this was not something that was done just because of an event, this was just a routine, and it was a, it had become the routine, and that's why when she mentions, again, looking at the imbalance, she's trying to have a deeper understanding of what's going on, I don't know if other administrators across the district are putting on gloves after the kids...
They are, that's correct.
Cleaning classrooms and cleaning toilets, I don't know.
They are, they are helping out with the custodial, we have had calls from administrators that have shared that with us. We can bring the staffing plan back even after you approve it, and we can break it down, administrators by teacher, administrators by students, and see if that makes a difference in how we look, and we can certainly make a three fifty or less.
Well, go back to the whole concept of school-based management, school-based management with funding, and look at equitable funding for every school based on the student population, and look, I mean, you know, it's too late to move around it now anyway, and so I understand that, but I think that we, that I think it's something that we really need to do, and when I ask a question about why do we do it that way, and the answer is, it's because the way it's always been done means it's time to ask, is that the best way to do it?
Well, the reason there's an assistant principal at those elementary schools is because it's always been this district's philosophy to have an administrator on campus where there are kids and teachers, and you can't guarantee that if there's only one administrator, and people get sick, people have personal issues that come up, they miss work, and there's, and it would be impossible for us to tell you that we can guarantee there's going to be an administrator there without an assistant, right now, we don't have that problem.
Have we ever thought about sharing system with twenty-two schools?
We've shared, we've sent principals and administrators to other school sets.
We do that now when we're covering for training and those kind of things, certainly it's something you can look at, I would say we do it with the TOSA, we do it with other things between Homasasa and Full City, but we've not, we've not done it with an administrator.
I mean, it just comes to a point, when you're at a breaking point financially, where you have to say, can we afford to maintain those schools without low student enrollment and a higher cost per student, that's the basis why we privatized Renaissance was a cost per student, so if we're making those decisions based on cost per student for Renaissance, we need to apply that same standard to our other schools, why is Renaissance different than any other school that we have, it's our students, so we're going to use that as a gauge of what's too high, what's too expensive, I think we need to look across the board on all of our schools and programs and look at cost per student, at every school, I figure how can we make it more equitable.
And I, my thing...
But that would be someone else's problem.
Sure, dump that on us. No, I think that that's been our struggle, and I, I think that the Renaissance, as we know, has been that continual conversation, that per pupil cost, we know there's always going to be differences, that's just the reality, especially you have, you know, Central Ridge that has a very young population of students, of teachers, they are, I think, one of our more, most affordable per pupil costs to operate, they also have a new school that has all the energy efficiencies and all of those other mechanisms, as compared to Homasasa, who I think is our most expensive school after CREST now, since Renaissance is no longer operating the same. I think that that's been our continual question, is that we, we need to continually find ways to be equitable, to do what's best for students, and manage our funds, and that's not always easy, because that one of what's best for students is always that tough part in there, you know, Homasasa, they are number three in the state for science right now, I think, or the latest, it's in that range.
Yes.
And I, I think last year, I think they dropped, I think last year they were second, but I mean, that's how they've been, at the same time, I struggle of the fact that, like you're saying, Ms. Deutschman, eight hundred and fifty students are getting the same number of personnel that three hundred and fifty students...
Same number.
Of administrators, I'm sorry, thank you. And, and at the same time, I know that those teachers, when I've talked to them, they will say how tough it is when they don't have those, those support services that they talked about, I will tell you, the APs, that's got to be a great training ground, because I think those APs are doing everything, because they are a curriculum specialist, they are the TOSA, they are all of those pieces, babe, you're, we do have to look at it, I'm not sure how we begin.
And your units, your additional units, like PE, your music, those kind of things at the smaller school, they have the same, but they still have the same, we want to offer those kids the same services, we want those kids to be exposed to art, we want those kids to be exposed to music, to PE, I guess if you can find one teacher certified in all of those, then you run into the certification issue, so you get to a point where if you're going to expect them to operate with the same per pupil cost, then you have to ask yourself, can we afford to have a small school, because you don't want to deprive those kids of the same opportunity as a student going to an eight hundred student station school.
Well, the health attendant, you know, if you had a health attendant that was also an office staff, because I can tell you, having to pick up my own daughter, the health at Central Ridge where they've got, you know, seven hundred and something students, they have something that breaks out, one health attendant, Homasasa's got also one health attendant for three hundred and fifty, and I'm using Homasasa, I don't need to pick on them, they're just in that under three, yes, I was going to say, Ms. Bryant will make sure to personally come and do damage.
One of the things Ms. Himmel's asked us to look at for Homasasa's is alternative things that we can, we can do out there, one of those would be with the environmental area that we have access to, can we do something as a K eight environmental school, a one to eight environmental school, the better you have it.
It's got water access in the back, doesn't it?
So our staff will be starting to explore that and see what the, what those types of options are.
I was reading the paper recently that Marion County has declared their county's all schools of choice, have you seen that? And that somehow exempts them from a cost size amendment for classes average.
Really?
And they're saving eighty-four teaching units, that's a huge amount of money. I didn't dream this up, did I?
Right.
Okay. I was really surprised, they had eighty-four openings, and they weren't going to fill them because they were going to go to the school of choice. Every school had, I think every school has to be declared a school of choice, and how they're going to limit enrollment and... And how they're going to limit enrollment and all that, I don't, I don't really know.
Taking the bus to those schools?
You know what, I didn't, there wasn't a lot in particulars. It was just us, I think, a little blurb. I don't think it was Renado County, I think it was Marion County. And it was a lot of teaching units, I think it was really a lot. I was really surprised how much they would be able to save. Do we know about that permission in the law that if you're school of choice, you don't have to comply with class size for class? Have you ever heard that? I've never heard that before either.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
Board members, then, on the staffing plan with that conversation, is there anything that changes that? Or is that conversation that we'll take, we'll pick up later?
I just wanted to mention that in the past, we talked about staffing plans and we've done the opposite argument, saying that if a school needs more services, then we should put those services in the school that needs the services. So we did. It wasn't to make it even, it was to make it by need.
That's what happened to the Renaissance. That's how we ended up with, you know, fifty-five people that worked out there.
So we've argued this on both sides.
No, I think you're, and I think you're right. And I, I do think budget plays a factor in that. It, it is hard gone to. When we have it, we're like, then let's, let's give it to the kids, let's get it to the services. When we don't, then we start scrutinizing those decisions. So I think that's a normal.
Looking at proving the plan with contingency, you know, I'm trying to get feel for.
I, I have no problem moving forward. And then again, I think that this is, I think Mr. Mullin indicated that superintendent and he are, are exploring options and decisions there. And I think they need to with, with those, particularly for the under four hundred and fifty. So I have no, I mean, I'm not sure that I need to do anything at this point.
How many is to approve the staffing?
So the motion is to approve the staffing plan as it is. Any more discussion?
Let's re-approach the plan.
I didn't think I had, Ms., I don't have, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Ginger.
I need to approve the staffing plan.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen staffing plan. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, Ms. Balfour. I mean, Ms. Deutschman. All those opposed? Motion carries four one with Ms. Deutschman descending. I'm sorry, Ms. Deutschman. I usually am hearing and I did the, okay. And budget update?
Are we going to see food service?
Oh, that's right. Food service, Mr., Mr. Pistone. Did you bring us money? Because you're just going to say, you're one of the departments that, you know, we appreciate how you fund the rest of our district where legally permissible.
Please point that out that it's legal.
Have we, by the way, redone all of the cafeteria tables and everything or are you close?
We have two more on the docket for this summer and then we'll have one left.
Wow. They're pretty awesome, by the way, during performances, other.
Thank you, thank you.
We even have a church, I think, renting out one and they use them as pews.
Have we taken up some collection? From the school district. I'm here to ask approval to reclassify a few positions. And if I can just go over them one at a time and any questions that you have, I'm here to answer them. First one would be to approve to reclassify food nutrition services high school managers from a C S three to a C S two pay level. Questions that I can answer regarding that?
Tell me why you're considering that they need to have a livable salary.
I'm sorry? A livable salary? Are you talking about the high school ones that we have in there?
This is what you just said, the C S twenty to the C S nineteen to the C S seventeen, is that what you're asking?
Okay, no, no.
Sorry, never mind.
Okay.
I just want the C three to C two.
Yes. That again is they have more responsibilities, just what we were talking about, more students to have to serve. And they are classified exactly what a middle school is paid at. So it's hard right now for us to find, we have, we're having one of our managers retire before the end of this school year, and I have no takers. There, there is no incentive for somebody to go from a middle school to a high school manager at the same pay rate that they are now.
Just got finished with an argument.
I was talking about.
Yes, ma'am. And we're, we're talking money. Please understand all of these that I'm asking for a paid out food services, not out of general fund.
It's the same, you could, and also I remember discussing middle school and high school over at W T I. And the first assistant director was asking for, did it consider it on the high school level? And the vote or the statement was no, no, middle school, consider the middle school level. When it was hard to understand why, but it's the same argument. It seems like we should have a rule.
I think the biggest difference is, he just told you he has no applicants. We don't have that problem.
That's the difference right there.
And looking, looking at the situation we're talking about now, can I make a motion to approve the reclassification of the food and nutrition services high school managers position from a C S three to a C S two pay level?
Hold on one second, let me just repeat that so that I, I have it. I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve to reclassify for the food and nutritional services high school managers from a C S three to a C S two pay, uh, pay level. Okay, continue discussion.
Now, we have three high schools and your, the amount of your budget you're increasing is three thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you presume that you're increasing the pay by a thousand dollars a year?
Uh, it'll just move them up and then basically that'll be that for this, this time coming forward, yes, ma'am.
So it'll be a thousand dollars a year increase? How is that going to help you in attracting different people for a thousand dollars a year?
Uh, it certainly can't hurt because right now we can't get anybody. So for a thousand dollars, they work ten months out of the year. Again, anything that people can take, they'll take at this point forward.
And, and your budget, your money comes from this federal money that we can get for food services?
Yes, ma'am.
State money designated for food services?
Yes, ma'am. We receive some state money as well. Majority of our funding comes from federal.
Okay, and then the revenues that you make in the cafeteria?
Local, yes, ma'am.
Does it impact the classroom? Does it impact teachers and everybody else?
Not a penny.
Is all your money there?
Yes, ma'am.
And what, what is the amount? I see the amount to increase, but what is the salary?
Uh, it depends on what level they're at, how many years of experience that they have, ten years.
So give us a range, eleven?
The beginning for a high school manager, looking about thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour.
It would be hours work?
Sorry?
Yeah, if the question is how much pay increases are going from a C S three to a C S two, the hourly rate would go from fourteen seventy-three an hour to fifteen thirty-six at the beginning of the pay scale. So it's a sixty-three cents an hour increase.
If we have a person that has, that then would look at that internally, would they get credit for years then too? They also get their year, they get their number of years in there. Any other questions for Mr. Pistone?
Mr. Try to give me the reason. I ask because I know somebody who was a teacher who went to work in the cafeteria. Is there a credit?
Currently not, not at our, our managers, our food service managers, no, ma'am. If that's something you asked me to look at, I can be looking at that as well.
No, I, I just was curious if they, you know, got some benefit that you talked.
They must have a high school diploma that they must have.
And then there's certifications that they're going to add.
Yes, and that's through the Food Service Association. And they must be served safe certified so they understand sanitation and safety. So there are some certificates that they must hold.
Mr. Pistone?
Yes, sir.
Roughly, and I bet you may know this, how much money did you, you take in in revenue? Not from tax money, but from revenue of your à la carte and other services?
From my à la carte through April, I think we have that right here, if you'll bear with me a second. We have April's financials, so through our à la carte dollars. Okay, give me one second here. I've got the rolling paper. Uh, you're probably looking at a good seven to eight hundred thousand dollars is what we usually make in a year's time for à la carte services.
What'd you do with that money?
Uh, what expenses would you like me to start rattling on?
You, do you, how much did you ask for?
Money back into the cafeterias as well as cafeteria furniture for the schools. Uh, we do help pay salaries of custodians as well to offset some of the costs from the general fund regarding that. Uh, we put money into replacing vehicles for the warehouse. And that's something we're looking at now as well, so.
Now, when you did that, how much of that money was saving of lower taxpayers in the general budget?
Uh, how much was it saving? Probably, I would say, just say this year, what we spent cafeteria furniture, probably about a half million dollars with that. Uh, with the warehouse, what we're replacing with the truck there with the lift, probably looking at about thirty-five thousand with that. Any additional equipment, if you're looking at custodians, you're looking at anywhere from four to five hundred thousand dollars when you include benefits for those people.
This is why we empty his pockets when he comes in. Mr., Mr. Blocker, about how much money did, from the general fund, did we send over to shore up Mr. Pistone's budget?
Approximately five thousand.
So let me get this straight. He gives us like seven hundred thousand dollars and we give him five thousand?
And the five thousand we have to because.
Correct.
This fund cannot support him.
Well, you know what, at that point, I'm good with however reason we, we gave it to him.
So Mr. Blocker had no choice with that because that is federal where you can't allow people to go into the negatives. So he, he pays back food services for that.
Those are return checks, don't pay for lunches, those kind of things. It's just on a year, it averages five thousand a year.
And that's about the last two to four years.
Yes, and, and truly, Mr. Pistone, we appreciate it because that's huge. We're talking about, you know, three quarters or so of a million dollars, you know, annually at least, that we are saving at the lower taxpayers because you are able to, and it happens to be that your, your department is a little bit unique because you get to operate as a business. And you've done a great job doing that for our students. So I have no problem moving forward. I, I think that this is a little bit unique because we need a job. Uh, we need, we have a job that needs to be filled. We're not getting applicants and I think this falls into that unique situation. So if there's, could, could operate. I'd, I'd be for that. Uh, board members, is there anything else? Um, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. I want to mature it because I do miss that. Okay, moving on.
Uh, this was the second item and I think this is what Ms. Deutschman was asking about. The approved to reclassify food nutrition services assistant. Assistants from a C S twenty and C S nineteen to a C S seventeen to align all food service assistants to the same classification. I know this is not what anybody wants to hear. This is what has been going on in the past. So I have been asked if I could correct this for our employees. So basically what happens now is a six-hour employee makes more than a five-hour employee and a five-hour employee makes more than a four-hour employee. And it's not just based on because they work an extra hour. They get a higher pay rate. And that true, when we ask everybody to do the same amount of work, that's not fair. And that's why might not been the best words to have used a more livable salary. Uh, but with that, we have a lot of turnover and it's very hard to find people. And we've had a very difficult time this year. I can't thank my staff enough for working short staff. We'll come out of the office and go help. We cannot find substitutes. And when we lose somebody that's a four-hour work, even though we pay them benefits because they can go elsewhere to be able to make a little bit more, it makes it very difficult for us to perform what we need to do, which is service our students. So this would again, give people basically about a dollar more an hour and pay people what they should be paid, whether you're a four, five, or six. The only difference can be if you work an extra hour.
When, when these pay scales for the food service were put into place many years ago, food service was much different. We had bakers, we had people that did frying. We run food service completely different now. Roy will tell you, they don't do any baking. It's all prepackaged stuff. It is good quality products, but their jobs have changed, their jobs. So there really is a big difference now, or not a big difference now, between a four to six-hour employee. Years ago, when this was started, six-hour employees had different responsibilities than four-hour employees. Now they're just, they're food service workers, they all have the same jobs. It's just a matter of different hours. So it's a, it's an equitable thing to bring them all to one level. And it makes sense and Roy can afford to do it within his budget. So that's why it's being brought.
And it is confusing because I know Ms. Balfour was talking about what you're talking about in general and everything because you have all these discrepancies. You're saying, wait a minute, I don't know what the rule is. I know that you pay for your own, so it's a little different.
But we do look at those things and as jobs change, we do bring them back to the board and, and have them corrected if, if that's the case. And this is one of those situations where just a few years, all food service workers, their jobs have changed a lot. You know, they don't, they don't mix the dough and do those kind of things from scratch anymore. You know, it's, it's a different, it's a different food service operation than it was fifteen or twenty years ago.
Last summer, I think, Marine Science Station, we did something similar to this where we had a person that did one job, you consolidated some jobs, that job duty had changed. And, and I think it was increased, certain duty, I can't remember how we did it. But again, it was the same scenario that was brought forward.
What would a C S seventeen make if they just began?
Uh, a C S seventeen is probably going to be almost ten dollars an hour now, which is a much more, if I'm stating that correctly.
Yeah, it'll be nine sixty-two an hour.
And what would be the yearly?
Uh, they work basically about a hundred and eighty-two days out of the year.
So I could not give you an exact. Uh, again, with that, that would be a four-hour worker.
So the C, C S seventeen is the four-hour worker?
That's what they would move towards, okay, to align them all at that level.
The C S twenty is what you're asking. Who is the current four-hour worker?
Oh, that's a current, they're a C S twenty, I'm sorry.
Okay, the four-hour is the C S twenty.
Correct.
Four-hour is six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents. What is that, is it ten hours?
For C S seventeen.
And then when you add their benefits in there, so yes, it's, it's not a whole lot of money to be able, with the amount of work that they do there, so. And again, Mr. Mullin stated it, times have changed so much. We always say it's not your mama's school food service any longer. We are not getting in raw product, we are not cooking raw meats. You, you just can't with the changing of times with any food service, whether it's school food service or it's restaurants in town. You'd be very surprised to go back behind those walls on how food's being prepared, that you're not going to see a lot of this because time is money. And you need to be able to, you know, get the meals out there as quickly as possible and at an affordable rate. So if somebody will already pinch the rolls for you, is what we would call them, and put them on a tray and all they do is come in, you take them and put them on a pan and stick them in the oven because they're already proofed, then that's to your benefit to be able to do that. You're operating a whole lot more cost effective.
I was surprised with it going out to eat. I found a restaurant, it was one of the large chains around here, does not have a stove in the kitchen. Everything comes in all ready to eat up. I was amazed.
There, there are microwaves that are in a lot of our restaurants that you'd be surprised that come in and they have industrial microwaves that will heat your food and they'll just plate it and serve it to you.
And I want to make sure that, that we're sending the right message here because things have changed. It's not the same kitchen as it was before. Things are coming in prepackaged. It's not that the, it's not that we're looking at these folks and saying that you have less of a workload. If that workload has changed, the dynamics have changed. So you're scaling back your staff. The staff that's there has an exponential.
Absolutely. We look at labor hours, Ms. Balfour, every year to make sure we're meeting our benchmarks that we should be at, and that's meals per labor hour. And that's taking in how many lunches we serve, how many breakfasts, how many à la carte sales, how many adult meals. how many adult meals and that's all plugged into a formula and then that's how we staff them based on that, so if meal counts start to go down through attrition, we just don't fill with a six-hour employee, we might only fill them with a five-hour employee because based on the numbers that we're at and then again, if their numbers increase, then obviously we would provide them with an additional staffing hour or more if need be.
If you did this and it made the hourly rate equitable, if they had to increase or decrease hours, it wouldn't move them to different pay grades, it would just simply decrease or increase their hours and it makes it more equitable across the board.
It's easier for you to manage. And if you add five duties to what they would have, what happened to them there? If they had extra duties within what they were doing?
Extra duties for what they're doing, again, we would look at, again, how many meals are they putting out there, so if there's extra duties, that would usually probably mean we're serving more students and then we would adjust their labor hours as necessary, okay? I also want to point out, just because something might come in prepackaged, I don't want the public to think that we serve inferior foods to our students because we do not, okay? Everything is prepared on site there to where we heat and serve it at the correct temperature and all, we meet all the rules and regulations and we provide our students, I always tell my staff, I will take on any school district, I don't care how large you are, how small you are, and I'll put our meals up against anybody's and I mean that seriously because we serve a high-quality meal, it's colorful, it's nutritious and we do our student testing to make sure it's palatable for our customers.
And you have good food taste.
We have wonderful food taste.
We meant the students, Mr. Mullen. That was really good.
I approve to reclassify the food and nutritional services assistance from CS twenty and CS nineteen to CS seventeen to align all FNS assistants to the same classification.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve to reclassify the food and nutritional services assistant from CS twenty and CS nineteen to CS seventeen to align all FNS assistants to the same classification. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
I apologize for all those acronyms, but when you write food nutrition services so often, it's so easy to say FNS. Okay, and our last item was approval reclassification of maintenance trades worker, food services a CSA to adjournment kitchen equipment mechanic CS five. We have three positions that we have staffed for our department, now our guys go out there and they take care of all our equipment, okay, any issues that go on in our cafeterias. Currently, we have not filled the one position and that's for an HVAC mechanic there because both of our gentlemen that work for us went out and got their certifications on HVAC thereby saving the district money that I don't have to have an extra person. Right now, the gentleman that is a CSA, I would like to be able to move him exactly where our other gentleman is at the CS five because again, he performs the exact same duties as that CS five and he took it upon himself to go get that certification thereby saving the district money and not having to hire an additional person with that qualification of HVAC.
I have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reclassify, to the reclassification of maintenance trades worker, food services to adjournment kitchen equipment mechanic.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the reclassification of maintenance trade worker, food services, CSA to adjournment kitchen equipment mechanic, CS five. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five, I mean five zero. Okay, I added a new person.
I just wanted to make some amusements in the audience, I've been, I guess Joe's Deli and he needs to go up to Gainesville to explain to the delis up there what a deli really is because there on end is, no, you can't have lettuce on your sandwich because it doesn't say lettuce on your sandwich, very bad.
Now, that's a loss of sales, so if an lettuce leaf, you just lost the customer for life.
We need to have Joe train them.
Thank you all. Thank you, sir.
I'll be very brief. On the twenty-fourth, we'll have our budget workshop for June, that'll be the last budget workshop per se before we approve the tender budget in July, we'll bring forth all that information to you with all the different changes that have been approved through the last couple of months. I will be sending that out to you probably the Friday beforehand, we have PowerPoint email, is that acceptable, everyone is okay, but that's my goal, let me get that to me. The twenty-second, I think is the workshop.
Oh, do you, twenty-four?
Twenty-four, I'm sorry.
What time, how long will that take place?
I don't know that we've set that time yet, Ms. Bryant. I think it's, I want to, yeah, I, for some reason, I thought we had a pretty full agenda, but I'm not sure, I'm flexible as long as we can get it all done.
It doesn't matter to me.
We typically start them at nine, the workshops unless we feel like we can finish something earlier and then we'll sometimes start them later. I'm still good with nine o'clock though, if anyone else is, I know, I was gonna say ten.
Hopefully, that'll be emailed out to you Friday, so Ms. Deutschman, you'll have the.
Done that before, I just have to put a little.
I can, Mike's usually over here on the phone, it just never works for, I think you're driving into the mountains or something.
She's like, I'm hiking.
I was, it went off in the back.
That's it.
And we are moving on to school operations, Mr. Mullen, which initially looked like was gonna be not a whole lot for Mr. Mullen, but then it ended up, Mr. Clotter, we added a bunch of things, so. Are we doing calendar first on this?
Which would you rather have, if we can do calendar and do that?
Yeah, let's do calendar. We have.
The right introduction to this would be, may I have the envelope, please? Waited.
I think I may have, does everyone have the calendar, because I think I may have everybody's copies.
Did you want to give an email with the testing dates?
That box may be overlooked, so what you're looking at is the worksheet that our committee, and I'm so very grateful to a committee who came in, many of them off-duty because they felt committed to ensuring that we have a calendar that meets and matches the needs of teachers and students in our community and that it's out there in enough time so that families can play in. Also, my appreciation, Mrs. Himmel, you said to the committee, when you design a calendar, keep in mind that our students and schools will be experiencing an overwhelming number of changes, changes to the standards, changes to the teaching practice, changes to the tests, so let's try to keep things as similar as we can, so this calendar essentially is the same calendar we've had the last four years with the dates different and of course, the state tests different. I believe, Mr. Kennedy, Mrs. Deutschman, you said there are ninety days of testing and a one-hundred-and-eighty-day calendar is represented in beige there on this chart, I'll go down to the PDF in a minute. Please know that ten have been, ten days of testing have been added this year, next year along with seven new tests. Seven new tests will be included, most of them are in writing, all of our eleventh graders will be new to them, they don't know this yet, will be taking an eleventh grade English Language Arts test and an eleventh grade writing test. Our Algebra II students do not know they'll be taking an end-of-course Algebra II test this year, so that will be very different, that was not expected to be separate tests, we'll have two weeks of writing testing starting in March. So, when you look at the calendar, I ask you to notice that only the months of August, November, January, February have no testing, every other month has either half the month or all of the month scheduled for testing for some student, some subject, at some grade level. With that, the teachers will be coming back and again, this was not a positive, however, it just seemed to work that way.
Excuse me, Mr. Son, in fact, I can ask you to just say something because I think this is important, a place to insert, can you just tell them about third and fourth grade reading and math?
Sure.
Versus everyone else, because I do think this goes to the key of the things that we've been doing in the district and it happens to, it does affect the calendar.
So, when you look at all of the testing, Mrs. Deutschman, on the chart that I didn't send you, but I do have.
It says statewide assessment and I thought that was scores, I didn't, the rest of the.
Everything else that's in there, so in there, in that package you received shows the, I don't think I have, I do have it here, I'll have it here, it shows what types of tests are being administered, so almost all, every single test next year, other than third, fourth grade and science, will be computer-based testing, so the challenge our schools will have, because when you computer-based test kids, you must have a lab and you cannot test everyone at the same time, so instead of doing a kind of a solemn hundred sixty-minute of testing, you have all-day-long testing for multiple weeks, from elementary to middle school to high school and you must have the capacity of labs, internet service and staff to support troubleshooting when those occur. Now, you combine that with the fact that now we have two different silos of operation for tests next year, there'll be all, all of our tests that will be linked to Pearson, which is what we've been using the last several years, so the staff in schools and the high schools are already saying, we're not sure we have enough personnel to manage tests, all of Pearson is in one platform and one whole enrollment process of students and then there's the new partner on the block, AIR, and all of their enrollment processes, test administration, et cetera, so now schools have two sets of tools to administer, web tools that will be administering those tests and will have to train staff on two different systems of test delivery, test enrollment of students, test delivery and ninety-eight percent of it is done, as Mr. Kennedy referenced, by computer, only exceptions are third, fourth grade, reading and math, fourth grade writing and fifth and eighth grade science.
So, if I'm a fifth grader and I'm taking my ELA test and I have to write something?
So, if you're a fifth grader, sixth grader, seventh grader, eighth grader, ninth grader, tenth grader or eleventh grader taking your writing test, you must have those skills, we're not even sure, again, you need to know that John Mullen would stand here shaking his head with frustration because we have no test specifications released yet, we do not know, Mr. Kennedy, what that writing test will look like, we don't know if it uses a Microsoft kind of base Word system for students who will type, you referenced that, Ms. Powers, earlier, I think about five months ago, so we're not sure, Dr. Gettys, what that's going to look like, to even guide teachers, to train students on how to be keyboard skilled to, now you have to expect students to think about their response and it really will be analytical, to then organize that thinking and then transfer that to a keyboard typing.
And, and you know, the reality is, we have taught writing and this is not a shameful thing, it's just the reality, we've taught writing through pen and pencil and so that thinking process that a lot of us as adults have captured, that we, often a lot of us will think through typing, it's not, it's not a proficient skill. When we had the Park examples, we kind of had a guide of at least where we were going and included fonts, italics, bolding, underlining, things of that nature that would be used, but at this point, all of those, I'm assuming, are out the window because we don't know what it's going to, to look like, is, and I know this, I don't mean to get into the subject area, but does that mean that again, a fifth grader would be expected to write, in essence, a page?
We're not sure because we're not sure if.
Because I know that was a common core standard.
We know it's not a prompt, they're not gonna respond to tell us, you know, given a prompt, tell us when or explain or describe, we believe that this type of writing, Karen, Jordan, Christine, I think is gone, we believe this writing will be more comparative, analytical, evidential of, you have two passages and you compare them.
Explain the differences of the author's purpose in the, et cetera.
Or pull on previous knowledge, so that's a type of writing.
Again, fifth graders are gonna have to, are the entry level for this when it comes to writing?
Fourth, well.
I'm talking about of a computer-based.
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
Let me ask, I ask Mike the question, so I should ask you the question, what if soon as they're taking the test and something happens, like I always have, somebody has the electricity goes off and something happens with the computer, how is that judged? Is it like stopping and put down your time?
Mrs. Powers, that has happened before.
Yeah, I shared with her about caching, I said, I wasn't sure about the administration.
So, we're speaking, I'm speaking in tongues, I am not sure, I know what, Mrs. Powers, we did previously, I'm not sure how that will work with the new company contract we have with AIR. In the past, what happened is, as Dr. Gettys referenced, that whole test is kind of stored locally in a room close by, if you could picture that, and then what happens is if I'm unplugged and I recall a Citrus High School student who kicked the plug out and could not figure out why her screen went blank and everything stopped, so when it was plugged back in, still could not recapture it until we went back to the server, it was there, we had a 1-800 call Pearson number, Pearson said, yes, it's there, we'll send it back to you, so within five minutes, Jerry Switek, who happened to be at Citrus High School, connected the student, she continued with the test. Sometimes it cannot be continued until the next day, which is why in these ninety days, why we have multiple weeks, because you cannot do the testing in two days, a test will take three weeks to do.
And if that test, the writing test was, the given time was an hour and something goes wrong and you note the child's time, it's already taken and now he gets more.
You estimate, you, you give us, the Department of Education gives us trust and confidence to say, whatever you judge to be appropriate for that student to make up the time, you at the school level will decide that. But you say something, you said something else, we do not know, Mrs. Powers, how long these tests are, are they an hour, are they two hours, are they all day long, are they twenty items, are they fifty items, are they a hundred and fifty items, are they multiple choice, are they open response, we have no idea of the structure design, so the frustration is, and you've heard this, you've read this, Mrs. Deutschman sent me articles, Mr. Kennedy, the most recent mom in Seminole County, so I have my third grade child and I'm a third grade teacher, former one in the audience here, who says, I'm not sure, I know what the standards are, I'm not sure how my child's gonna be tested, I can't tell you, Mom, Balfour, what's going to happen to your child, ensure that they get promoted to fourth grade, I don't know the scale, I don't know the way the test is structured, so we really are, and that's, again, I go back to Mrs. Himmel, thank you very much, Mrs. Sandra Sam Himmel, you said, keep things as, there are so many changes and challenges and emotional tugs on educators in our district, try to keep this calendar, make something similar for them next year with all the changes that are taking place.
And the six new tests that we're talking about is what you were saying, not just, not just, it's seven, I'm sorry, but six also on the EOCs, that were between the EOCs and the.
You count the Algebra II and then the eleventh grade and then all the writing. So, this calendar is designed in such a way to try to make accommodations for this, so I'll begin, when we begin July 31st, there are ninety days in the first half of the year, ninety in the second half, and if you look and if I slide this far to the right, the first nine weeks is smaller than the second nine weeks, forty-one days the first, forty-nine the second, because there are more test dates in that second nine weeks, so the committee was very thoughtful even before knowing what the schedule was to anticipate what might happen with a schedule that includes a new assessment that has high stakes for students and teachers. Teachers come in on the 31st, on this calendar, our audience who are here and you see at your desk, the red, the red outline, yellow, those yellow days from the 31st, this calendar is difficult because it's a horizontal alignment of each month, the 31st of July and the first second, the first, fourth, fifth of August are either teacher workdays or one of which is professional development, so we leave it up to schools, so the other part of this... So the other part of this, and again, Mrs. Himmel, you've charged schools leaders to say, "You decide, while we have district-level structures, you must also decide what is best for your school team." And Mrs. Waldvayler has guided that with professional development days. Those are the red triangle halves are the early release days. There are four of them. Last year there were five. We had to eliminate one because it landed in the test window. So there are only four of those. And those are incredibly valuable because we won't know until late summer what these tests are going to look like, what these skills are needed to, for technology for typing, to try to train teachers to teach students. And I think back, Mrs. Belle Four, you're thinking in the classroom when you're watching your writing lessons, it's going to be very different, taking the writing to respond to a prompt, to the writing to think, to type on a keyboard and respond. Very different process. So those early release days and professional development days will all be targeted to teaching practices that align to reading, math, writing, science, social studies, and all the end-of-course exams that are redesigned in a high school.
Well, I know we have, this is on-topic, video off-topic. I know that we need to have a tighter alignment with keyboarding. As an elementary school teacher, I know that we have that responsibility to deepen that introduction at the second, third, fourth, and fifth, or edging onto that mastery. But then again, I know in our plan, those kids have it again in ninth grade. They'll see it in the middle school, they'll see it in ninth grade. And sometimes if we don't require skill mastering to find what skill mastering is with finger placement, what I've seen is a conflict between the teacher that knows where those fingers need to go and a young student that has already mastered their own hunt-and-pick system that, that still gives you whatever that worst-per-minute rate is. However, it's the way they get to it that becomes the battleground.
And it's new turf because Dr. Gettys and I have talked, so iPads, tablets are also going to be acceptable devices on these new assessments. So your typing on a keypad is even different than your typing on a laptop keyboard. So those are all very different tactile, you're right, so training. So I'm asking you to always keep in mind this year that the challenges, we're going in with great unknowns, but our teachers are courageous and I think they are stepping up to the plate. You mentioned middle school writing and it's an opportunity for me to say so. Our eighth graders, middle school writing are third out of 68 districts in the state of Florida. And again, you were right. Mr. Kennedy, number one is St. John's County with 21% free reduced lunch, Santa Rosa County with 28% free reduced lunch, and then you see Citrus County with 65. Now, I don't say that diminishing anything about Citrus County. So the students we have, that is, that defines the economic condition of the students we have, who are empowered, who are taught, who are demonstrating proficiency, equal to some of the most economically advantaged students in the state of Florida. And that's because of great teaching and leading and support that occurs in this...
Ms. Bryant.
So St. John's is number one, Santa Rosa...
Santa Rosa's number two.
And who's number three?
Citrus County.
I thought, I thought we were four.
In writing, we are number three, in eighth grade.
And in the other...
In other, we are, and again, I'll be happy to later time to show you where we stand in each, we don't have all the results in for all the subjects yet. That's what, we're still waiting for geometry and biology results. They're not in.
When you say St. John's, it's like home areas. And when you say affluent in that area now, it's affluent. It's like homes of three, uh, three million, four million, five million.
It's one of the more affluent community counties in this, in the United States, so... But again, we, it is a, it is an international world where our, our child who is economically disadvantaged may compete for a job against that kid in St. John's County and I am very proud to be part, Mrs. Himmel wrote a, a response about the best part of Citrus County, where the best part of Citrus County is, doesn't matter where you live, your zip code, your income, the opportunities for your learning are equal to the most affluent communities in, in Florida and I think in the U.S., so...
And it was the best thing, and I bring up St. John's because it was a big fight in St. John's County from those people, speaking of very affluent people, because other people are arguing about dispensing money equity, whether it's, some people did not want to dispense equity, they wanted where they were for their schools to have those, or to, yes. But here, like you're saying, it's across the board, everyone shares, everyone gets their piece of the pie.
Right. And Mrs. Simon, what a joy it is to be a part of that team that it doesn't, you know, it's not about me, it's about what we do for our students. So that really is, that, that really is wonderful. So going on the calendar, we have, there was discussion about these early dismissal days of the end of each term. Again, commitment to keep things the same, we're leaving those every, there are two at the end of each nine weeks in blue, those blue triangles you see, that we're leaving teacher workdays, sometimes used for transition to the next term, particularly in the secondary world, so those are staying. The FTE are those green, they're triangles because they overlap the test in October and also in February. The purple dates are all the holidays, we left those just the same for Christmas, for Thanksgiving, the full week. When you come to spring break, and here is the dilemma, that spring break is, was recommended to be by the committee to be considered the 23rd of March until the 27th of March, which was also fair week. When the test schedule came out, that's a test-scheduled week, but the state of Florida said, "We heard you, Sandra Sam Himmel." She had a call, her contact to Pam Stewart, our commissioner, is powerful influence. Thank you for doing that, because they said, "What we'll do is, we'll create three weeks." Because Citrus County, not just you, there were other, almost 60% of the state had scheduled that week. So they made three weeks. So you have three weeks of a schedule and you pick two of those three for third and fourth grade tests and for high school retakes. So we chose to have spring break matched with fair. Students will come back the 30th and we will not begin testing until the next day, Tuesday the 31st, and that will be our directive to schools. Notice, from March 2nd until the last day of school, almost every single day is a test day. And that does not, this is statewide testing. This does not include advanced placement testing. This does not include international baccalaureate testing. This does not include fair testing. This does not include hurt, college readiness testing, all of which are required to be administered... All of which, I'm thinking, nope, they're not all computer-based. AP and IB are not computer-based. The rest are all computer-based testing and that's where we displaced classes unfortunately to get that done. The last day of school for students, if you notice there, is I believe the 22nd of May. And the last day for teachers is the 27th. So again, we have provided with, we are recommending to you to consider this schedule. We have already created the PDF document that will be posted to our website as soon as you say amen. With your recommendation, we also accommodated WTI, for they run on a very different schedule and different structure. Slow down. Their schedule is different in terms of early release days. They do not have those as we do because they base their instruction and credit on count of hours in class. So thank you, they're very grateful. Ms. Willis, Dr. Richard Van Bullock are very grateful to you in supporting their desire to make a slightly different schedule. And again, maybe at another time, the more information to you on the test, once we know how long, the details, and we have one more bit of information that was just released today, based again on efforts of our superintendent to contact DOE. There was not going to be an algebra test in December, so all those students who needed to pass that in order to meet the graduation requirement would have had to wait five months to take the test. The state of Florida recognizes such, and it really is nice to be part of a, good thing we're hypoforming there, Mrs. Himmel. And they made the recommendation, they will admit, we will be able to administer the test in December to our high school students so they do not have to wait five months. And the challenge will be, and I hope some of our high school team are out there listening, the first half of the year, those algebra teachers, Mrs. Joseph are going to be, oh, sorry about that, are going to be teaching Algebra I standards that we have done, they're going to take last year's test, starting January, the Algebra I they teach will match the new Florida math standards. So they'll be, that's the challenge. And again, the option there was, if you don't do that, then you have to have the kids wait five months. So we're going to work very deliberately. Mr. Clodder's going to help us ensure that all secondary schools know that they'll be splitting the standards of what they're teaching to those students based on the tests that they'll need to take to demonstrate proficiency.
How'd you find out about, how'd you get the information that we were going to be allowed to do that?
Look to your right.
And, and Mrs. Simmel, how did you, how did you get informed, an email?
I text Pam Stewart last week and she called me last night and said that they sat around the table and figured out what they would do for Citrus County and they would allow our students to take the old algebra exam in December when the kids take the retakes.
See, her texting list is much better than mine.
You speak number one, number R?
I, I, I know who want, I know who I want on my team. So again, I, we present to you this calendar, if you have, it is not how we wish to do calendars. We really, we are grateful to our association, our bargaining units for completing a memo of agreement to say that we realize that the contract cannot be followed, that talks about process for voting based on the delay by the state of Florida. So again, Mickey, please forward my deep appreciation that, and again, an extremely cooperative, understanding, empathetic group represented Mr. Kennedy on the board, this committee of parents. It's interesting, they really have keen insight to know and they are very logical and use common sense based on what's best for kids and teachers.
Thank you.
Any other motion to approve?
Yes.
I'm going to approve the 2014-15 school calendar for Citrus County schools.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve the 2014-2015 school calendar for Citrus County. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Simon. Mr. Clodder, curriculum update, and I believe this was, I think actually, Ms. Deutschman, you had brought up the River Project, maybe, and getting some information on it. So I was excited to have Mr. Clodder bring this...
Good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Miss Simmel, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullen, and Board Attorney Mr. Bradshaw. Yes, we are, we wanted to provide you with some information regards our, to our health program in Citrus County. Want to just basically provide you with some background. As part of 1999 legislation, the Florida Education Now and Babies Later Enable Program defined the goal of reducing the incidence of childhood pregnancies in this state by encouraging children to abstain from sexual activities. This program must provide a multifaceted primary prevention, community health promotions approach to educating and supporting children in the decision to abstain from sexual involvement. The instructional core of the Enable Program campaign was the postponing sexual involvement. For those of you who've been in the district for a while, that probably rings as a reminder of some of the curriculum that we've used. Citrus County Schools then partnered with the Life Choice Care Center staff, and Darla Holliston was in charge at that time, through a funding source of Title V called Community-Based Abstinence Education, or CBE for short acronym, to provide education to students on the social, psychological, and health gains to be realized by abstaining from sexual activity. Since this support of our health curriculum is aligned to the course description from the state, we regularly reviewed the content and assisted the facilitating of the program with the schools. Guest speakers would then visit two middle schools and three high schools and the Teen Parent Program over at WTI. However, in 2010, a significant shift in federal funding actually was affected for abstinence programs. After nearly 30 years of strong support of programs, the Obama administration and Congress eliminated two discretionary federal funding streams for abstinence-only until marriage programs, Enable grant, and the abstinence-only marriage portion of the Adolescent Family Life Act. In addition, Congress followed, allowed the third funding stream, which was the Title V, abstinence-only marriage program, to expire in June 30th of 2009. As a result, in the change of funding, Darla Holliston's program to fund staff to assist schools was actually cut. In, on November 5th, 2010, Miss Alagretta, Bridgette Alagretta, Bruce Sheffield and I met with Katie Neely, who was a CBE instructor at that time, and shared the passion to continue the service to our schools, as she was, as teachers were actually calling upon her for support. Katie is the co-founder of the River Project, a not-for-profit agency, and at this meeting we reviewed her program, her intent, that she and the health teachers were providing to the students as a resource to deliver the health state standards. Since this meeting, we have had and made classroom observations. We meet regularly with the River Project staff to monitor their support. Today in our curriculum update, we would like to provide you a presentation with Bruce Sheffield, our coordinator of Health Physical Education, and Katie Neely, to provide the board with an update of our health course at the high school level. Okay, I want to, I want to thank Alice Christian. Alice Christian's been here since four o'clock. She is a, a Laquinto High School health teacher, a PE teacher, who was once at Citrus High School and actually has firsthand knowledge of being able to utilize this program in, in our schools. And we knew Alice back at IMS years ago and we thank her for being here. So with that, just members of the board, I've actually uploaded this to our Dropbox, the PowerPoint is there. I'm going to pass down the hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sheffield, okay?
I guess I should say good evening to the, to the board members, Mr. Mullen, Ms. Himmel, and Mr. Bradshaw. My part of the presentation, I'm going to kind of give you a little background information on where health has been, where they've gone, and where we're trying to go as far as health education in the state of Florida. And so I'm going to... Do I use this right, Mr. Clodder?
Oh, just leave it on your book.
Okay, in 2006, the House Bill 7078 stated that one credit of physical education with integration of health course was required for students earning a standard Florida diploma. And this was under Statute 1003.428, 28 and 6. And basically what they did at that time is they took the half-credit of health education out of the graduation requirement and placed it into what they call now, a lot of, a lot of districts offer what they call, it's called HOPE. HOPE stands for Health Opportunities Through Physical Education. They created two different classes. One is called a HOPE Variation and one is called a HOPE Core. The HOPE Core class is your more health-related, is your more health-related class, and it can be taught by two teachers, one certified in physical education, one certified in health, or one teacher who is certified in both. The HOPE Variation is a more PE-related variation, uh, class, where it can be taught by one physical education teacher who is certified in physical education only. When you look at the two courses, the course descriptions compared to what we offer in Citrus County, which is health-life management, you're going to find that in the HOPE Variation class, they only, they only cover 16 health standards. In the HOPE Core class, they cover 30 of the health standards. And in life management, which we cover, we cover 40 of the health standards that have been by education. And so basically, you know, in Citrus County, we have chosen to keep the health-life management class because we actually are covering more standards in that particular class than in the, than in the HOPE classes. the, than in the HOPE classes. And like, like I said, in Citrus County, we offer the Health Life, Health One or Life Management Skills class, and as part of our graduation requirements in Citrus County, our students are required to have one half-credit of health, one half-credit of personal fitness, and one half-credit of physical education. As of recently, we had a meeting that I was, I had attended, I was informed that as of right now, I think we're the only state in the, our only district in the state that has those graduation requirements. I understand Broward County just recently dropped their half-credit of health requirement and, down at their, at Broward County. So right now, Citrus County, from what I'm understanding, is the only one who offers that, offers the half-credit of Health Life Management as a graduation requirement. Just kind of a side note, I am on the Board of Directors for the, it's called FAFR, which stands for the Florida Alliance for Health Physical Education Recreation and Dance. They have, we have just undergone a major shift change in our bylaws to match what the national AFID, AFID has done. AFID changed their, their name to SHAPE America. We just, we did all of our bylaws, and we are now going to be called SHAPE Florida, which stands for the Society of Health and Physical Educators. And, but our goals are still going to be the same. One of the goals of the Health Association of the, of SHAPE Florida is to get the half requirement for health education back into the graduation requirement in the state. Some kind of a background on that, in 2013 legislative session, Representative Mia Jones sponsored legislation up in Tallahassee to get the, to put the health, half-credit of health education back into the graduation requirement in Dietting Committee. This past legislative session, 2014, SHAPE Florida or FAFR at the time, we searched high and low to try to find a representative or a senator to sponsor legislation, and we could not find anybody that was willing to step up and, you know, file a bill on our behalf. Come to find out towards the last part of the session, that some false information had been given to those people, to the legislators in Tallahassee from one of the, another county that kind of, you know, gave them a sour, a sour look at it. And so, you know, we're trying to address that as a, as our organization. And another thing that was brought to our attention is a lot of the legislators up there, whenever you try to talk to them about putting that health education back into them, they don't want to talk to you because all they think of is that when you talk to them is that this is a sex education bill. And so we're working on that to try to, to try to get that put back in because of, we just think that it's vitally important throughout the state that we have this in the, in there. The purpose of our, of the Health Life Management course, of course, is to produce health-literate students that make good decisions and take positive actions for healthy and effective living. The core standards that I just, I passed out to you, these come from CPOMs. If you just take a moment, you can look under the, under the general notes, and it will show you exactly what the course should be, should include, but not limited to it. That would be on the, on the page, second page. I have it listed on the, on the PowerPoint. I'm not going to go over each and every one of them, but just to know that, you know, our Health Life Management touches on personal health, prevention and control of diseases, teen dating and violence, substance abuse, substance use and abuse. And I'm going to get into that a little bit more later on. Some of these other, the other slides I have basically show the standards that are addressed in, in Health Life Management. And what I have under each of those standards are, have pulled out some of the benchmarks that show, you know, how these, these benchmarks that show how these standards are addressed in these benchmarks. And so this is what we are required to address in our health classes. And I'm not, I'm not going to, you got, you have that information, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, answer them for you in regards to them, but I'm just going to kind of skim through them, because basically I want to get to the, to the part where, where, why, what we are required by state statute to teach. And if we, if you look down, State Statute 103.46 says that each school district may provide instruction in acquired immune deficiency syndrome as a specific area of health education. Excuse me. When getting instruction in this, in acquired immune deficiency instruction, deficiency syndrome, sexually transmitted diseases, or health education, a school shall, and then it lists several things that we have to do as a district under the statute. Teach abstinence from sexual activity outside of marriage. Emphasize that abstinence from sexual activity is a certain way to avoid out of wedlock pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases. Teach that a student has the power to control personal behavior and provide instruction material that is age and grade appropriate. The reason why I, I show you this is because I want you, you understand that our county policy, 4.00, Roman numeral 12, is verbatim to what state statute is. So we, and our, our county policy requires that we teach the way that the state policy ...
The state tells us that the only way to prevent AIDS is by abstinence.
Well, that's what, that's what state statutes want, tells us that's what we're to teach.
So we just ignore the fact that if a student is sexually active, we just...
No, we don't.
We don't, we don't give them any instruction on...
No, we do.
Okay, I was under the impression this was an abstinence-only program, that there was no...
No.
...instruction on what happens if you choose to do otherwise.
No, not at all. Because, well, if you, I'm just going to kind of skim to the, there's another stat, state statute that talks about, it's State Statute 1003.42, 2N. And basically, that requires comprehensive health education, which incorporates both sex education and disease prevention, and includes language on the awareness of the benefits of sexual abstinence as the expected standard consequence of teenage pregnancy. They give you an, they state the district can have the guidelines or the specific content of any subject matter is determined by the local school district policy, which gives districts the latitude to determine the type of family life and sexual health education program that is implemented. What we're considered in Citrus County, we're considered as an abstinence-plus county, because we emphasize the benefits of abstinence, include the information about non-coital sexual behavior, contraception, and disease prevention methods, also referred to as abstinence plus or abstinence center. So I know, there's four different levels. You can be an abstinence-only...
What's level four?
Comprehensive.
Which is?
Um, you got my...
We teach you how to prevent yourself from getting pregnant and getting diseased, sexually transmitted.
Comprehensive is, this is the comprehensive education, sexuality education. It's a K through 12 education program that views sexual education as a lifelong process and addresses sexual development, reproductive health, interpersonal relationships, affection, intimacy, body image, gender roles, abstinence, and contraceptive options.
So we teach that?
We teach some of that. We don't teach all of that. That's why we can't consider ourselves a comprehensive district, because we don't, we only, we cover, we don't, I mean, there's certain things we don't.
Okay, so why wouldn't we?
It's based, based on, it's based on what our, our policy states is how we do it, our county policy.
Our policy is out of date. I remember very clearly, as we all do, sitting at graduation, seeing a little girl in the front row, squirting around because she's not ready, ready to give birth. And that's not uncommon sight in our high schools. I think we do have a high teen pregnancy rate, which I guess tells me that abstinence-only probably isn't as effective as we wish it was.
Right.
Because they're, they're getting pregnant, it's not by abstinence.
That's, yeah, that's true.
So we got, we got some, some work to do, I think.
Well, and that's, you know, if we got some news today on...
Chart came out today? Yeah, it has gone down, or our, which one of these has gone down? We basically ran the, this chart, and in 2013, our, we are above the state level in regards to teen pregnancies in Citrus County. But as of 2013, it has gone down.
To what, from what, to what?
Well, I'll show you the visual.
Oh, okay. Can you just tell me?
No, I can.
Okay.
Not a number on this.
You know, it's interesting, while you're passing that out...
Yes.
Um, because I had, I had been at Citrus High School and I did the presentation for the River Project, I was not aware of what the River Project was teaching. So it just kind of perked my curiosity. One of the questions that we asked our one exchange student is, tell us about sex education in your country. And all of them, without exception, said that it was very comprehensive. It started when they were in elementary school, and it was very explicit as far as being very clear about how to use different, they couldn't understand how we would, abstinence-only would be anything that would be effective. It was interesting, looking at perspective from students from another country, another culture, how they view sexuality and how they view sex education in their schools and their responsibility to their students differently than we do. We're still puritans here.
The one thing that, about the comprehensive too, that, that, it's not, this is not the definition I gave you, is that some of the districts, there are only six comprehensive districts in the state of Florida. They may be, they may be considered comprehensive because they have a tie-in with their local health department where they distribute condoms to their, to their students. And we definitely do not do that, you know, in Citrus County.
Do we have any statistics that show the difference between those counties' birth rates, teen birth rates as compared to ours that have a different approach to it?
We, we have that, we have the information that shows, you know, what the pregnancy rates are in other counties as far as what they're doing, as far as their classes.
But you said...
What I understand is like, a lot of, like I said, we're the only district that I know of right now that offers Health Life Management. A lot of these districts have gone to that HOPE Core or HOPE Variation. If you look at the HOPE Core standards, they talk, they talk about sexual activity and STDs and stuff like that, the HOPE Variation actually does not get into that. So, and it basically, it depends on what I guess the district offers, whether they offer HOPE Variation or Cores on what their teacher is certified to teach.
Okay, but my question is this, because you said there was four counties in the state of Florida that teach the comprehensive?
There's at least, there's six that I, that are on the list.
Do you know what their teen birth rate is?
Yes, I mean, I don't have it with me, it's on my desk, but I have the information.
Yeah, we just did that this morning, that's what we were talking about today. I think Gadsden is one of them.
Gadsden.
I think Miami-Dade, which is high, which was, so it fluctuates.
Do we have a correlation to say that that program actually is effective, or that they're showing that they actually have less of a, you know, of a, of a birth rate, of teen birth rate than, than ours?
That's the data that I think we accumulate at this point.
Okay, well, what does the data say?
That, that data that showed with you, if you need the, the, I'll, I'll share with you the chart. But basically, Gadsden County, I think, is up to like 14, whereas Miami-Dade is like six. So it doesn't, that data doesn't, the data really doesn't steer you to take any assumptions that they actually, that the comprehensive is actually having a better effect on their teen pregnancy.
It could also be the economics of the, and, and the social economics of that community.
Yeah, I really didn't think Miami-Dade would be as low as it is, but it is low. And then Gadsden County, didn't think it was going to be as high as it was.
So basically, that's, that's my presentation part, was to try to give you, you know, where we are and what we're doing in our county as compared to what's going on in the state. At this time, I'd like to introduce Katie Neely. She's the program manager for the River Project, and she's going to give you an overview of what they do when they come to our schools and talk to our kids.
I think it's this opt-in, opt-out program, or no?
Yes, it is. Before they, before they go to the schools, the teacher that they're going to go, the class that they're going to go into, will send a letter home with the students. And since we, they've been coming to our schools, that I know of, the teachers I've talked to, they've never had a student opt out. And they're going to share, she's also, in her presentation, I don't want to steal her thunder, but she's going to share with you some of the comments from the students about how they feel, what they feel about the program as well.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here as a representative of the River Project. I've met most of you, but for those who haven't officially shaken hands, thanks for having me. I wanted to just leave Bruce's last slide up there just for a moment, just to share that 55% of the counties in Florida currently subscribe to what's referred to as abstinence plus. So that Citrus County is in the majority for that, so that's an interesting thing to note. And one of the biggest separations between abstinence plus, which could mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people, and what we were just discussing, comprehensive, is that comprehensive is K through 12. So that's a big distinction. It's less about contraceptive handouts, and it's more about when those things start. So we'll, we'll go over that a little bit in my, in my presentation. Oops. I'm just skipping here, Mr. Sheffield. Okay. Our risk avoidance program encourages teens to be intentional about choosing health and success in the face of the reality of what it means to be a teen today. So a lot of people say, are you guys saving rivers and teaching children not to litter? And I say, no, they shouldn't litter. But RIVER is an acronym that stands for Reaching Intentional Victory Expecting Reality. So we want to talk to our students about the fact that regardless of, you know, depression rates and suicide rates and things that they're living in. We had a girl exit class the other day because she was on Facebook, and she saw something say that her friend had just recently taken their own life because of relationship issues. And so one of the things that we focus on is that, you know, the problem with students that are struggling is not teen pregnancy, it's relationship issues that then lead to some of the statistics that we'll, that we'll look at today. So we are a risk avoidance program, and we're all about empowering and equipping teens to make the healthiest choice for themselves. An overview of how we work, we act as guest speakers within health or social studies-type classes. Since this is a curriculum update meeting, I'm just going to overview our ninth grade curriculum, which is where we, is our highest priority. So we act as guest speakers within health classes, and we visit middle school classes about five times, and we visit ninth grade classes eight times. So the health class Mr. Sheffield was outlining is nine weeks. So we see them every week except their final exam, which is really great, because we get to build that relationship with them. We go once a week for eight weeks. High-risk venues, including the Teen Parent Program and the Renaissance Center, receive programming once a week throughout the year. The River Project equips and empowers students to stay clear-headed and intentional on the way to their future, staying away from the drama of drug use, unhealthy relationships, and sex too soon. And we open this up for discussion with them. What do you guys think is too soon? What are your friends using sex for? Is this something that is helping an already healthy dating relationship? Is this something that people are being pressured into? Do we need to talk about sexual coercion laws, which is a part of the LMS health class? So we go over all of that, and a lot of our classes are student-led. We ask them what they're seeing. We do not use a curriculum that we've written. We use an internationally recognized curriculum from the Center for Relationship Education. They're based in Colorado, and it's called WAIT Training. WAIT stands for Why Am I Tempted? We are really acronym-heavy, so bear with me. Why am I tempted to, you know, have a relationship via Facebook instead of face-to-face? Why am I tempted to rely on texting to deal with tough issues instead of, you know, talking to someone face-to-face? Why am I tempted to think about sex only from the media's perspective instead of maybe introducing myself to health statistics? So we, we get them to look at the reality, and why are we tempted to only look at these things from small standpoints? We believe that, and our curriculum teaches that sex and relationships are holistic. They affect humans physically, intellectually, emotionally, socially, and spiritually. That's their worth and value. So those questions, why am I here? What can I do that nobody else can do? Why protect something if I don't know what I have or what my potential is? WAIT Training has been approved at the district level. So again, because it's a curriculum update, I was asked to just kind of walk through a typical class and what our, what our week-by-week actually looked like. So the week one is learning about yourself and others. So we talk about sexuality and relationships are holistic, they affect us, P-I-E-S-S. We refer back to them as pies throughout the class, and it's real funny, they pick up on that, and they start, oh, my pies, I forgot to talk about my pies. Where do you want to be physically, intellectually, and so on, in your twenties and in your thirties? Which ages decisions are going to affect the twenties when it comes to relationships, when it comes to sex? Yeah, but also when it comes to education and my goals and my self-esteem. So does ninth grade actually matter? Ninth grade becomes 10th grade, and our 10th grade relational habits become 12th grade, and 12th grade becomes college, and then I'm in adulthood. And then what foundation have I built, my ideas about myself and my relation to the world around me? Where did I get that, that information from? So we just try to augment and supplement the great... So we just try to augment and supplement the great information they're already getting in their health class and teaching them about. It's very goal-centered. So can sex and relationships affect a teen's goals? Can they affect them positively? Oh yeah, I get some interesting comments there. Can they affect them negatively? Oh yeah, everybody's got a story of their friend or their next-door neighbor or themselves that they're currently dealing with. We close the class with a fun game. We talk about personality profiles and how to interact with people who might have different strengths and weaknesses than you. I ask my teachers to do this too, and the health teachers are very obliging and always have fun with us. And we have the kids guess what their teacher is just based on their teaching style, and it's all about learning to work on your strengths and what you need to work on yourself, and then how to work with other people. So you'll see that this is a lot more than a sexual health program. It's relationship education, and sexual health is a portion of it, of which we'll get to next. Week two is cultural influences. This is my big thing, so they have to kind of cut me off sometimes because my background is media and culture studies. Who and what do we allow into our circles of influence? Most students are getting their information about sex from the media, and although it's beautiful and entertaining and sparkly, it's not necessarily the most realistic view of what teens today are having to deal with when you look at teen mom and 16 and pregnant and all that kind of stuff. Are the sex scenes in movies? And is dating via text message or asking someone out on Facebook, is that a healthy way to learn interaction with someone that I'm romantically interested in? We analyze the way that media shapes our ideas about gender and relationships, so looking at gender roles and challenging those. And we look at the differences between, we kind of talk a little bit about historically where women have been, where men have been, and how that shifted in 2014. We look at sexual messages and ads. We talk about the onset of pornography today, and that the average age of exposure for pornography in our country for boys is eight. And that's not because they're searching for it, it's because somebody on the bus pulls out an iPhone and says, oh, my brother sent me this, or look at what I found, or they misspelled something on a Google search and up it comes. And so they're seeing these things really early. And again, if it catches someone's eye right at that time that everybody's curious about sex, relationships, all of those things, then their first sex ed teacher is going to be a media message. And the media, as you'll see on the last point, is an industry. So what's the purpose of an industry? Making money. And so if they can make it look better, cooler, prettier, then they're going to continue doing that. But that's for entertainment, that shouldn't be my source of education. So we just get them to think critically about where they're getting their sources of information. Week three is risks and consequences. What are the risks of early sexual activity today? In 2008, which was the most recent CDC study, we're real big on medically accurate information. All of our data is scientifically based, and most of it is taken from the Center for Disease Control. One out of four sexually active girls in the U.S. will get, already has, or already has at least one sexually transmitted disease. And so one of the big topics that gets brought up is contraception. And so, you know, we're not anti-contraception, but with the onset of skin-to-skin sexually transmitted diseases, the CDC says that condoms do not fully reduce the risk of certain STDs when compared to STDs like HIV/AIDS, where they're going to create that barrier, and condoms are highly effective against preventing HIV transmission. But when it comes to the number-one STD among youth in the U.S., which is HPV, condoms, that's a skin-to-skin STD, and there are parts of the body that touch during those activities that are not covered by contraceptive measures. And so we have to talk to the kids about, you know, what that means and what condoms do and do not reduce the risk of. As teen condom use has increased, teen pregnancy has decreased nationwide. Actually, in Florida, teen birth rates are the lowest they've been in 30 years, so that's awesome. Citrus County has decreased in the past couple of years, which is also really good. But STDs have skyrocketed. This was someone who built her career, she, Meg Makers, she's a doctor in, I believe, Texas. And she built her career with adolescent sexual health, just looking at the fact that, hey, my girls are having less babies, but something's wrong here. They're in unhealthy relationships, or they have multiple STDs, and so is teen pregnancy reduction the end-all, be-all? Or do we need to kind of look at the root issues here? So the Center for Disease Control says that a lifelong mutually monogamous commitment to an uninfected partner is the only 100% way to guarantee against an STD. So we, Mr. Clatter mentioned the history of what these programs have looked like in Citrus County, and previously, the programs have been abstinence only. Our program is, falls under that abstinence plus because we do set that standard for them. We want them to know what the CDC says, which is that this is the only 100% guarantee. However, for students who choose to be sexually active, we want to provide them with the correct information as well. So that being said, a curriculum note I felt was important to include is that risk reduction methods such as condoms and birth control are an important part of sexual health, and medically accurate information is included, but these devices are not distributed in our classrooms. If a student identifies as sexually active, that student is encouraged to go to a medical professional, clinic personnel, to get tested, to receive risk reduction education in a one-on-one setting, not in the classroom. That's for two reasons. The first is that the intention is to not normalize early sexual debut for seventh, eighth, and ninth. The oldest students I see are ninth grade unless they're repeating health, which sometimes happens, but we're all about passing and then graduating and going on to have a good life, and then creating more good jobs in our beautiful county. But the problem with that is, is that when we see seventh, eighth, and ninth, and I have two students that start talking about their escapades, and I start teaching just to them, then the other 18 are like, well, I'm 13, and I've liked this guy for two weeks, and what should I do? So we don't want to normalize early sexual debut. We want to take that student, and we want to thank them for being brave and taking charge of their sexual health, and we want to encourage them to go get more information on that from a medical professional. I'm not that. I have a degree, but it's in communication, and I'm wait-training certified, but I'm not a school nurse. So we want to encourage them to get that information right from a medical professional. Additionally, like I said, the root of teen social issues isn't teen pregnancy. It's a big deal, and I get it, trust me. But the root of the issue is fragmented families, broken relationships. So one of our classes we see every, every week is the Teen Parent Program. And we go in there, and we talk to them about relationship choices. We talk to them about, you know, the partners that they're with, not just the fathers of the babies, but the mothers of the babies, because sometimes we get teen dads in there, which we always want to cheerlead them, thanks for showing up, thanks for being, you know, responsible and being here for the child that you helped to create. Week four, we move on to more of that relationship information, so we're talking about violence prevention. Here's where we help to fulfill the Florida state standard for teen dating violence prevention, which is that every seventh through 12th grader in our state has to have a recurring class every year on dating violence prevention. So we discuss what's categorized as abuse, physical, emotional, mental, verbal, sexual, how to prevent, recognize, and report teen dating violence. We have to give them something to leave the class with if they need help, so we give them a little card that has warning signs of abusive relationships, our information's on there, CAS's information's on there, as well as a website and a number that they can visit or text to take little quizzes. Is my relationship healthy? Does he or she actually care about me for me? That kind of thing. We talk about power and control and those warning signs that abuse happens way before anybody screams, way before anybody throws a fist. It's all about the control and, oh, let me see your cellphone, and yeah, well, he broke into my Facebook, but he's just really jealous because he cares about me so much. So we talk about some of those things, and hey, is that really a healthy person for you to have in your life? One of my favorite activities is the Dating Bill of Rights, and we talk to them about pledging allegiance and, you know, what our rights are, and that rights come with responsibilities. So we do this like we do the flag. We stand up as a class, hand over the heart, and we pledge allegiance to ourselves that we deserve healthy relationships. So we talk not only about our rights, but my favorite part of this is the responsibilities. The first one is to communicate clearly and honestly. You know, I cannot tell someone that, I need to learn how to tell them what my boundaries are. Yes, with sex, but also with drugs, with cheating in school, with all of these issues that kids are coming up against. I need to learn how to say, no, that's not for me, or no thanks, or just no, because that's also a complete sentence. So we talk about that, and we do some activities with refusal skills. Again, if they've decided that they want to refuse drugs and alcohol, if they've decided that they don't want to cheat in school, if they have elected to postpone sex right now, it's all their decisions. If they've made that choice, which the majority of seventh, eighth, and ninth are postponing sex, then we want to just give them the information of how to do that well. For those that are not, guess what? They still have rights and responsibilities, especially with sexual health, and so we want to encourage them to get accurate information. Week five, we deal effectively with conflict. We talk about communication being the foundation of relationships. Research says that it takes 300 hours, I don't know how many board meetings that would be, but face-to-face, voice-to-voice communication and learning about, you know, picking up on facial cues and verbal cues and all of that, and does my Facebook profile picture and all the pages that I've liked really tell you about my character? Those are the things we need to look at in relationships. Signs of unhealthy boundaries, this is huge. Talking intimately at the first meeting, oversharing online, switching friends or partners often. Again, that could be friends, that could be romantic partners, it could be sex partners, but when I'm switching my crew really quickly, something's up. I need to pay attention to, hey, you know, why am I doing this? I need to find some consistent people in my life. We talk about the steps of intimacy, that physical intimacy, so going back to that initial, not the intellectual and emotional. Physical intimacy is progressive, so research shows that wherever the last date ended, the next date tends to pick up. So if I have a physical boundary, whatever it may be, and we outline the 15 steps from eye-to-eye, catching someone's eye, to hand-holding, to kissing, and so on, we say, where are you guys going to set your boundary? We have some caution tape that we hold, and we say, you know, you guys get to decide where your boundaries are going to be. We have set that standard that, hey, any type of sexual activity, which is anything happening below the waist with someone else's body, is considered risky right now. Not by my standpoint, not by Florida statute, by the Center for Disease Control. They say that adolescent sexual, early sexual debut is one of the biggest risk factors in the transmission of STDs. So we talk to them about, hey, where's your boundary going to be? And when you set that boundary, how should you talk to someone about that? Should you communicate that to them, or should you just be like, well, she knows I have the River Project, I'm assuming they know I have a boundary? We can't assume because we know what that does, right? We have to communicate clearly and honestly. And getting them comfortable with these words, we found that if we say sexuality and we're talking about STD prevention, and we're talking about condoms versus postponing sex, early on, we're giving them those words, then they're really open to talk about those things because they have questions about this stuff. We always do it from the standpoint of being respectful, and, you know, of course, we lean conservative in the classroom. Sometimes students ask questions that I have, they've not been taught the medical terminology. They don't know certain body parts that they've had, because again, who educated them? The media. They're watching rated R movies, they're, they're watching PG-13 movies, some of that stuff is crazy. But again, getting them to look at accurate health information and then making the best choice for them. Week six, we talk about differences between men and women, and we look at the male and female brain. We're big on neuroscience. So what the scientists say, what the doctors say, because I don't have those letters after my name yet, is that men are like waffles and women are like spaghetti, that men tend to compartmentalize information in their brain. They have a friend box, a work box, a golf box, an Xbox box. And when a man is in that box, or I'm sorry, I should say, when the male brain is in that box, they like to stay in that box, finish a task, complete it, do it well, then move on to the next one. Is there value in that? Absolutely, okay? However, the female brain, and this happens before you're even born, it happens in utero, when the mom gets the hormone signal that you're carrying a male or female child. If it's a male, it severs a lot of the connections between the left and the right, leaving us with lots of boxes, which is not bad, this is a good thing. However, the female brain does other things. And so the female brain, they say, is like a bunch of spaghetti. There's lots of connections between the left and the right hemisphere. And so women really can cook dinner, check on your homework, ask if you've taken the garbage out, and, you know, finish that work email all at the same time. It's called multitasking, and it's a scientific fact that women just tend to be a little bit faster with that. So is there value in that? Absolutely. Which one's better, waffle or spaghetti? Neither. We both do things well. And so some females have more of this brain, and some men have more of this brain, and we're not looking at that whole argument today. We're just saying, hey, when it comes to the male and the female brain, we have to look at the fact that that 10th grade boy is going to have a girlfriend box and a grades box, and if they decide that they're ready to take their relationship to the next level and they have a sex box, sex and his grades are not touching. When teenage boys begin to be sexually active, their grades are unaffected. I have had several coaches tell me that they can always tell based on their performance on the field, but that's, you know, I don't have the data for that. That girl, however, when she, if she chooses to engage in sex with her boyfriend, here's soccer, here's her friends, here's sex with her boyfriend, what is sex with her boyfriend touching? Everything else. She's not crazy and she's not obsessed with you. Her brain is different, and so her relationships are going to be affected in a different way by the choice to date, by the choice to, or the choice to be sexually active. So we talk about that, and they refer back to that, and they always want to like bite the waffle, but it's plastic, it just looks real. Week seven, we talk about healthy relationships. One of the things that students say is, okay, okay, we know what not to do, don't abuse someone, don't break into their cellphone, but what are we supposed to do? And what is dating? And sometimes they don't know. So we have a fun game where they have to come up with 10 dating ideas under $5, or 10 things to do between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m., or 10 things to do with no transportation. And they're like, or 10 things to do in Citrus County. And I'm like, you guys, there's a lot more to do than you think in this county. So we do that. We also talk about love versus infatuation, and what is the difference chemically and hormonally? You know, infatuation is attraction. It could happen if somebody walked in the door right now, it's immediate. But love is that decision to commit and trust over time. And so sometimes we're confusing them, ah, there he is, ah, there she is, with, you know, that long-term commitment. So our last week is we talk about what's the purpose of commitment? If you're not ready to work on trust, compromise, and effort, that's okay, but should you be dating? Because healthy dating relationships require trust, compromise, and effort. So if that's not you right now, and you want to just focus on being a ninth grader and focus on baseball and focus on sport, which we encourage them to do, then that's good, but are you ready for dating right now? And if you are, cool, here's some great dating ideas, here's some good things to think about. If you're not, guess what? Not everybody in high school is doing that partner switch all the time. You're in good company. So it's for everybody. We talk about a spouse list, or what would you want in a lifelong partner? Is the person that you would want to end up with forever and ever? Is that the kind of girls and guys you're dating right now? Do they have the same character qualities? And we talk about opposites attract, right? Because that's hormones, that's brain stuff, but similarities hold you together. So a lot of students here want to talk about their families, right? And so, well, maybe this happened with my parents because of this, and so we process all that. You'll see an Etch A Sketch, which is our mass gunning here, because we say that the Etch A Sketch is kind of like your life, and you control the twists and turns you take. And the best part about an Etch A Sketch is that if you don't like the picture that was made, what can you do? You can shake it up. This picture does not go away by me holding it behind my back and hoping really hard it changes, right? It doesn't go away by me asking for a handout and not choosing to do anything. I have to act. I have to shake it up. I have to say, all right, maybe I should change the people that I'm, you know, spending my time with right now. Maybe I should listen to some of these adults in my life that are on my nerves but also full of wisdom, right? Maybe I should change some of my actions here. Here's a quick pie chart data that we came up with. This was taken from the fourth quarter. We ask a question on our survey that says, what's your attitude about early sexual debut? Or what's your attitude about early sexual activity? So we don't ask behavior or anything like that. And beforehand, you can see that our biggest one is undecided. They don't know. They're talking about it, they're joking about it, they have a lot of jokes about this stuff. But when it comes to their personal choice, they're not really sure. And after our eight-week program, that undecided has shrunk, and they've either decided that, you know, I think it's best to postpone in this early part of my life, or they thought that it's okay. And guess what? That's okay. They have the information and a lot more available to them now too. But we've set that standard, and we haven't compromised. What the Center for Disease Control says is the best, most optimal health message for seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. So here's some things that our students are saying. These were all take, there's two from each high school, and I love the second one, I learned a lot both this year and last year. Because if they get it all three years, by ninth grade, they're like, oh yeah, I remember this class. But I tell them, you know, we can say things in ninth grade that your eighth-grade brains couldn't handle, and so our class builds, and it's progressive, and they learn more each year. Um, the last one says, out of all the days I missed this quarter, I made sure to come to school. Cause on Tuesdays, because I enjoyed this class. Said, well, you should come to school every day. Um, here's some of the things that our teachers and our wonderful staff are saying. Just some accolades to our health department within the schools. Our health teachers have been big supporters since day one. They include some of our information in their class discussions and they expand on it. They use some of our worksheets just because our weight training program is like 25 lessons and we have to pick eight. Um, so they get a little bit more of this too, which is, which is really nice. Uh, lastly, just wanted to say that we're 100% funded by our community. As Mr. Clutter outlined, when, um, the federal funding went away, we committed to keep a program in front of the students and we didn't know what that was going to look like. But three years later, we've got a staff of four and we're able to commit to the Citrus County school system in the following order. So ninth grade's first priority, high risk after that, eighth, seventh. We're looking at some 10th grade review classes and maybe 11th and 12th assemblies, just to supplement what they're getting. I don't like that they get us those three years and then we're like, oh, good luck. But we're a grassroots nonprofit, so once we get more resources, then we'll be able to continue expanding. Um, our vision is to continue providing this and to expand. And, uh, just in closing, would like to remind that healthy relationships create healthy families, which are the backbone of a healthy society. This is not just about reducing teen pregnancy and thus not just about contraception. Those can be really good messages, but relationship education is holistic and, um, speaks to a higher level. And, um, we want to reduce poverty in our country and in our county by strengthening families. So we believe that that can start with our youth because they're awesome. Any questions?
Thank you. Excellent job. Very easy.
We're so interested in asking. Thanks for doing it.
Thanks for putting down the long day.
Katie, I just want to ask you one question. Um, you, you said to, in seventh and ninth grade, you do tell them that if they need or want condoms, they need to go see a medical professional. Do you give them any information about what services the health department offers for free?
Yes, we talk to them about they have two options. They can see a family doctor, which is a little more familiar to them usually. And then that they can see the health department. And, um, sometimes they'll email our program and they'll ask, all they'll need sometimes is a phone number. But we're working with the school nurses right now to kind of, um, solidify a protocol. So, cause sometimes what they need is you to walk them to the nurse's office. They just need that extra little bit because so many of the services that they want are already offered on your campuses. We just want to kind of plug them into that.
Well, I think my concern too is for girls that wouldn't feel comfortable confiding in their parents if they were sexually active. But yeah, the health department, I think, doesn't ask a lot of questions about.
Right, free or confidential?
And I, I just, so we're conveying that message so they understand that that's not, because I didn't know that until just recently.
I make them define free and define confidential, so they know what that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We also have the nurses. Uh, every couple of years, they sit in on at least one class so that they're hearing about the project so that because Katie and Katie are bond, a student might have a question, not that we go to where they recognize that nurse, well, go to the clinic gate and then they can have a conversation with them. And that does happen quite often.
Hey, I want to add to on that. They always give like their email address, so from day one. So they always say, do you have any sort of question or anything you want to ask us that you don't want to ask in class? And where they want them to, and I know they get thousands of public emails. And they do direct them in the right direction of where they need. They don't always take it upon themselves, they'll say, this is something that you need to go to the health department or bring the doctor for. So they're really, really good about that.
So our teen pregnancy problem then is caused by kids making bad decisions, even though they have the information as to what they could have done.
At times.
Or should have done.
At times, there's, the generalizations get me in trouble in this field, they really do. Um, but I would say that teen pregnancy rates have less to do with availability of contraception. Cause I, I ask them, where do you guys get this stuff if you are sexually active? They know where to get it. Um, it's more about, uh, misinformation. So they grab something, but there's no conversation with the health personnel. So we want them to get that conversation, instruction, learning what they're taking. Lots of girls are put on the pill really early, but they just take it every day and they don't know. Or they don't take it at the right time every day because they didn't read that pamphlet that was this thick that their older doctor gave them. So we just want to give them that information. Make sure they're taking.
It is included, it's not like it's not included in your program.
No, it's included. And, and if anyone has specific questions about lessons, I'm happy to showcase our curriculum in more detail, but I want to respect your time this evening.
And just, uh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Ms. Clutter.
Uh, since I saw a question of this, uh, do you explain to them what sex means?
Yes.
Because sometimes, uh, like SRO, uh, the person will tell the SRO they're having sex and the SRO will, will maybe discuss that with a, a guidance counselor. And their definition of sex to you might be a completely different definition of sex when they talk to me. So you.
Yeah, there's four types of sexual activity. They start with I, O, A, and S. I put I, O, A, S on the board and they fill it in. Um, and so skin-to-skin genital contact is that S that I was talking about with the newer STDs. So we just, yeah, we, we clear, we clarify that for them. Cause you can be a virgin but still be sexually active. So we don't want to, we don't use that word. It's misleading and nobody's business.
I know, um, I was shocked when I went to, with my son to the pediatrician. He's 14 now, I think it was when he was 11 or 12. And the pediatrician says, we'd like you to consider getting an HPV vaccination. And of course, good, well, what's the, we've got to get him vaccinated. What is an HPV vaccination? And I was, you know, and the pediatrician was very adamant about, this is what I, this is what I put my son on, this is what I put, you know, my, I wouldn't send my children basically to high school. Um, and, and so when you say that that's one of the biggest things, it certainly, and again, you talk about skin-to-skin, a non-virgin can still be sexually active. Um, it is scary and it's scary to be a parent of an 11, 12-year-old and thinking, I have to make this decision, you know, now, and if I don't make it now, there could be consequences.
On its prevention. It's prevention. And so what we do for our kids prevention-wise is going to not only save money in the long run, but save maybe them some of that trouble. So just do your research about vaccinations, lots of misinformation about all this stuff out there. So find reputable sources, as I'm sure you are all aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, and this is Debbie Sparandio. She's one of our newest facilitators. She's been with our middle school and high schoolers this year. And she has done an amazing job of being relationship educator and, and hanging out with them. So just wanted to recognize her.
Just one minute. That's okay. Spending a lot of time reading about statistics, reading about condoms, abstinence, that's, that's the affective education. It's, it's that part where you had Patrick and the, and the tests and things, that's the cognitive. This is the affective and it's those relationships. And to watch and go into that classroom where Alice is actually working with Katie and the, and the River Project, those relationships that they create, they do an admirable job of that. And I think that that's the key to that. Mrs. Deutschman, I apologize, I did not give you all of the information. This is actually the rundown of the state's, uh, district's results. And it does actually have specifically where they are. So I'll just send that down. I, I apologize, but it does actually, when you look at that and then you look at the districts that have the various kinds of absences, I can't really define what is basically the result. Because as I said, if the, um, programs that Mr. Sheffield talked about, uh, that Gadsden County, that's a pretty high rate there, but they're the ones that actually do have the comprehensive. Board members, I thank you for your time. I know it's been long, but I'm so glad that you're asking about curriculum things. But this is a, a very, very evolving, as, as Mr. Sheffield said. And Mr. Sheffield and I are kind of that, the business ones. Katie was kind of shaking, saying, oh, let me get up there, let me get up there, because she's excited about that topic.
Move them out, move them out.
As we've evolved into the health program, uh, we're very, very conscious about maintaining that health course in Citrus County. So we.
And, and Mr. Clutter too, it doesn't just begin with aspiring middle school and high school. Um, we actually begin that, I know, at least with my kids, fourth and fifth grade starts with a, you know, a video introduction, very soft, trying to build, you know.
Exactly.
Talking about bodies, body odors, things of that nature.
And they talk about age-appropriate. This program actually does identify that age material. So it's again, it's gradual. Thank you.
We don't want to necessarily over-educate them too early. Thank you. Uh, I think we are now just at Attorney Legal Matters. Mr. Mullen, Mr. Molden, I'm sorry, Mr. Mullen. Oh, we need to, I'm sorry, can we approve the minutes?
Motion for the next second.
Motion by Ms., uh, Bryant, second by Ms., Vowford to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Uh, now, Mr., uh, Mr. Ballen, thank you, I'm sorry. Ms. Bryant?
Fine, thank you.
Ms. Vowford?
I'm ready to pack and go.
Ms. Vowford?
I have a real quick question. I, I'm a surplus, there was a bunch of stuff that was stolen. Anybody know what you see out there? Yeah? Laptops, uh, graph meter, flasher, thermal imaging shirt, another laptop.
Everything, inventory if they're not found or if they're located, they're not located.
We don't know where they were stolen from?
Some of it we do, like the, the iPad, we do know. But some of it that becomes outdated and, and needs to be surplus. What ends up happening is there's no place to store that stuff. So it ends up getting from a closet to a room, to this room, and then, uh, there's no value left to the, those pieces of equipment. But, uh, they end up, the paperwork in most cases was not properly done. So it has to be reported as missing. That's the way it has to go for the audit.
Well, there's one from 2011, a laptop, so I'm assuming that may be.
Yeah, some of the items that, that we do know are stolen. We've had a couple of computers that students stole out of a lab one day that they were recovered, actually put somewhere on eBay in Texas. Uh, so I mean, there's, it's a variety. There's not one answer, but yes, we do stay up.
I thought, I hadn't seen that before, so I thought that was unusual.
Board members, I'll hold my report till another time. Um, but I did have a, um, invitation from the city of Inverness to attend the Flag Day Ceremony and Purple Heart City Designation being held on Saturday, June 14th, 2014, beginning at 7:00 P.M. at the Inverness Government Center, um, on Main Street. And, uh, if you would RSVP and Ms., um, Ms. Beth has the information on that, uh, so that you can be recognized.
Can you email, we just email that information?
And with that, Ms. Samuel, do you have anything? Okay. Anything else? We are adjourned.